Pressure's on.
Well, that being said, uh, here at the top of the hour, we are going to...
Happy hour.
Yes.
That would be nice.
We're gonna start our workshop with a carryover of the topic from last month, having to do with Dutchess County...
Planning Federation.
Planning Federation, and topic of housing.
Yeah, it was Development and Financing 101, so we'll pick up with the second half of this training, and again, this is all available on Dutchess County Planning Federation's website. What we talked about, or what was talked about in the beginning half, just to remind folks, is kind of went over, this is a presentation being given by Doug O'Clough of CPT, uh, CPC, Community Preservation Corporation, so they are a pretty unique lending institution in the region. We started with kind of the very basics of like the five Cs of credit and going through that, and then we started getting into kind of determining a project's costs and expenses, and then the loan amount based on, you know, expected income. So that's kind of where we, where we ended this, and that's on this slide.
And cost, the total cost is developing is a little more than a half a million. We were able to own more than forty thousand dollars, and so he had to put in one hundred and fifty thousand. And that makes sense. That's sort of like the sweet spot for debt and equity, somewhere around twenty percent equity. Developers generally don't want to put in more than thirty percent equity and loss, but their turn on their investment becomes less, and it may not make sense for them financially, because if they're getting a very low return on the cash that they have to put in, we call it a cash on cash return, they could invest these same funds in CDs, stocks, bonds, mutual funds that are less risky for a similar return. I'm a shoemaker, there's a children's hat, I've been financing affordable housing for twenty-eight years. I own my house, I don't own any other investment property, because I want to save that money. I put my money in here, something safe, because I don't have, I don't have the risk of all this, uh, developers. So they earn the loan, we guarantee that. So, the, uh, asking you to focus on the risks of real estate development. It's a daily business to all of us now. Uh, so, so what are the risks? Okay. And these are just a few examples. One is your acquisition of predevelopments, then you can spend money to buy land, or do feasibility studies, traffic studies, the planning boards require, plans, everything else, and then the project doesn't move forward for some reason. You can't get the variance, you, uh, there's something that comes up on the property, you can't get the financing in place, you can't find a partner, you can put in additional money that may be, so, so projects die on the line, and, and, and there's uncompensated costs for that. They don't get paid for that. The other is delays in project vehicles, and I think people that are on planning boards and zoning boards that die know that projects can get delayed for various reasons, for approvals, and that increases the soft costs, because again, where would they carry the cost? They gotta carry the land, they gotta pay taxes on it, they gotta pay the insurance on it while there, and, and you know, if you did, if you built a project a year ago, you could build it for about twenty or thirty percent less than you can right now, because it increases the construction costs, because of inflation in this project. It was right in interest rates now, you know, with the construction. The, the, the construction loans are, they're already, they go for it in unex, like ten year treasury. Ten year treasury has increased in the last few months from about one point five to about over four percent. That, that means that these guys are paying more than the construction costs right now, if they have projects that are in construction. And then after it's built and it's leased, you have other risks, like increases in operating needs, don't keep pace with the increase in rents. I'm told that insurance costs have increased by twenty percent in New York State in the last year. You know why? Because we like to sue shit, and then the lawsuits, and there's, uh, there's settlements that most companies have to pay, they're raised, they're raising the premiums. New York is a very litigious state. Um, and then there's also unexpected costs over, I go to dig my foundation, all of a sudden I get rock, or I take up some buried fuel tank that has to be remedied, or I start to rip open some walls, and I find some structural beams that I didn't, um, not go in years. Okay, oh, so you've got cost over risk, and then, you know, you've got market risk. You know, when we're loaning, we're loaning on one twenty-three minutes, we, we're loaning on what we think the rents are gonna be a year from now when you complete the project. Rents go down, uh, or, or we over-project anyways, we're more optimistic about the market, and it doesn't, you know, we're projecting twelve hundred dollars a month, but we only get eleven hundred dollars a month. That means I have to lower my loan amount back in, and if it's all worth putting more of his own cash. And then post lease of the property, like I mentioned, forty, could have unexpected vacancies, stores closed, tenants move out, tenants stop going around. So those are all the risks that developers take on, and they're real, and who's less to go with that? So, so now we've talked about sort of what we call the capital stack or project. So one twenty-three minutes, that was a live example of a project that actually got done, and those were leased at market rents, they weren't necessarily, not even put in, in, you know, in, in the extent that it's worth twelve hundred miles a month. This, I shouldn't say twelve hundred. So we've made, so rents are almost, almost above a hundred dollars a month. This is just an example, this isn't really what we did, but how would we use public subsidy to fund gaps in equity and conventional debt, which are created by offering properties at lower rents? And what happens is, because we're reducing the cash flow because we're lowering rents, that means our net operating income goes down. Though not net operating, so if we reduce the rents from twelve hundred a month to eight hundred dollars a month, all of a sudden, my gross income on rents comes from, goes down from seventy-one thousand to thirty-eight thousand. And that, and everything else stays the same, right? I don't get lower taxes, it doesn't cost me less to pay my super or whatever, it doesn't cost me any less to do repairs. So my net operating income goes down to seventeen thousand from thirty-nine thousand a acre there. So that means now, to get the same sweet spot or one three-oh debt service coverage, now I can only borrow, I can't borrow the four forty now, I can only borrow the two hundred thousand. So now I've got a gap, right? Because the developer's not gonna put in, this is the gap here, two forty, if I can only loan two hundred thousand, there's no way this guy's gonna put in three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. His cash on cash return's gonna be nothing, he's gonna say, I don't wanna put that in a CD, I'm gonna put it in a mutual fund, see him. So how do we, how do we, how do we, uh, know, you know, how do we fill the gap that's created by that? And that's where subsidy funds come in. And, um, so public subsidies are typically capital subsidies that are used to pay for project costs, that are generally structured as grants for loans. And in exchange for this, developers are required to keep the rents affordable, usually for a fifteen to thirty year period, subject to a regulatory agreement. And affordability is typically defined as rents with, uh, with, which are no more than thirty percent of the house, of the house that they own. And that's how they determine affordable rents. So that's one tool. And then the other tool that I wanted to talk about, um, for closing these gaps in affordable housing, which is, is a tax incentive program, sometimes payments, a group of taxes, or pilots. And pilots are a form of public assistance which can be used to come out of affordable housing. They generally provide lower real estate taxes to the project to offset the lower rents that developers are charging. By lowering the operating costs, developers can provide more conventionally, uh, they can book it, they afford to borrow conventionally, sorry, to cover the development costs that they wouldn't feed full real estate taxes. So this is the same example, one twenty-three minutes, with the eight hundred dollar a month rent. His total operating expenses include full real estate taxes of eighteen thousand, with thirty-eight thousand. But let's say the municipality offered him a pilot and say, hey, we want affordable housing for our community, for our teachers, for our firemen, for our policemen, uh, for municipal workers, for our service people that work in restaurants. We want, we want, we want affordable housing. So let's give these guys a break on their taxes. We charge them five thousand dollars per apartment. So we'll reduce the taxes from eighteen thousand, five thousand, and that's gonna lower their operating expenses by thirteen thousand. And then the NOI goes up, right? Net operating income goes up to thirty thousand dollars from, I think, one of the last examples, like seventeen or something like that. So, so now, I can increase the annual debt service on this. Now I can go, remember I went from four hundred and forty thousand dollars on my loan down to two hundred? Now with the pilot, I'm back up to three sixty. And, and so now, this project could be financially feasible. Developer could either put in another eighty thousand dollars, which could probably work, you know, he'd probably be closer to like twenty-five percent equity. Um, or, you know, Heather can tell you, public subsidies are scarce. I can ask the municipality for a two hundred and forty thousand dollar affordable housing grant, and I may be told, look, I only have eighty thousand dollars available, make it work. So the other way to fill the gap, you could use these two together. You know, you could, you could have, you could have a pilot, which also can be lending more, and you could have subsidy funds, which help to fill the remaining gap, or you just have the developer put in a little more equity. Probably the one that would easily work in this, in this scenario. So those are like the two tools, the main, two main tools for affordable housing finance. Um, and then these are, this is just a summary of the three scenarios. So this was the first one, market rents, where this loan was four forty, they had to put in one hundred and fifteen. This is just subsidy without the pilot. You need to get, find subsidy funds of two hundred and forty thousand dollars to make this work. Or this is the one with the subsidy and the pilot, who's able to get eighty thousand dollars from NCL or Dutchess County Planning and Community Development, and then the municipality gave him a pilot, which allowed us to, uh, to, uh, loan more money. So that's kind of like the math, I guess they don't get, um, get too tied up in the math, but that's what we look at. And so that's different tools that we use to figure out ways to finance housing and make it affordable. Um, and then the next thing I wanted to talk about was, you know, just a summary of, of like, how we look at, how we calculate, how we finance, how we maintain. We evaluate the budgets and the operating performance to try to maximize the loan. We recommend public subsidy, taxation programs, to produce funding gap. We evaluate the developer capacity. We, sometimes we recommend appropriate partners. Sometimes guys never built a project before, will say, why don't you go in with, you know, your brother-in-law, who's a general contractor, and you guys can be partners, you know? Where you should go, if there's a church that wants to build something, and they have absolutely no experience, and we hook them up with another not-for-profit that is a customer of our housing, somebody like that, who, uh, Repco up in, uh, Allstate County, that, that has experience. We try to, we try to recommend appropriate partners if needed. Obviously, we inspect the properties, um, we conduct market research, we review credit and financials, we review architectural plans and construction costs, that's a big one. We want to make sure that they can build it for what they say they can. And we have, you know, we have third-party reviewers, and then they're used to looking at all kinds of projects, and they know what projects should cost, and they know if the budget's too small or too big. And then, uh, post, post, um, we monitor this. We do monthly inspections as we advance funds, right, for party engineer. We don't advance funds unless work is completed and replaced, or in some cases, if there are required deposits for materials like elevators or windows or things like that, we kind of found that. And then we put in a contingency in the loan for potential cost over, it's usually somewhere between five and ten percent in budget. So if something unexpected happens, we have, we have some extra money in the loan to make sure that we can pay for that. We, we make sure that all permits and approvals for construction are kept on file. We hold ten percent of our loan until final strategic or occupancy. So we want to make sure the project gets completed. And then, as I mentioned, we also sometimes take on larger projects, letters of credit or bonds, um, which is also typically ten percent of construction costs, so, because we want to make sure the project gets completed. So that's like during construction. And then we have to convert this from a construction loan, which is an interest loan, like credit card, like I said, to a thirty-year permanent loan. So we have to review this afterwards, leased up, we, we don't want to get the rent roll of building, we want to get copies of leases, make sure everything's leased up, we want the final strategic occupancy, we want to see if there's any conditions on that occupancy. Uh, sometimes it's what's called temporary certificate. It's like, we'll give you a temporary certificate of occupancy for sixty days until you complete the landscaping or the playground, or the, we do the title search at permanent version, make sure they tax, we probably, make sure that none of the contractors, all the contractors have been placed, paid, and it's going to be deeds against me, like property. And then we update the performance, things change. Remember, like, a year ago, we were projecting rents, now we got real rents. We were projecting what the taxes would be, now we got the real taxes. We re-underwrite it at the time of the permanent conversion to make sure it still has that one three-oh sweet spot of debt service coverage. And then that's also the time when we review the property management. And if no, if someone doesn't have management experiences, we may maintain higher professional management, because we are with that loan for the next thirty years, CPC is. And then, post-conversion, there's ongoing management of, of the property. We've invested in this property for thirty years. We want to make sure it's not just good for the first year, we want to make sure it's good for three years down the road. So we do annual property inspections of properties that have closed on their thirty-year mortgage, and we notify the owner of any deferred maintenance or appear required. And we can put them in default, they comply with that. We get quarterly, or it's, it depends on who the, who the permanent lender is, like who the investor is. We do Freddie Mac, we do Finlay, we do different pension funds, do our permanent loans. We take operating, at least once a year, we get an operating state. We want to make sure the building is still financially healthy. And then the building reserve, remember the four savings account that I said for the building, ten years from now, um, there needs, they need a new boiler, or they need a new pot water heater. We have that nest of fund that we hold on behalf of the building. They have to do repair first, and then you can reserve. Um, and then, the operating state is the building, we also want to know that the owner himself is still financially healthy. So he has to submit an annual financial statement of his own, his personal financial statement. So we evaluate, we want to make sure he's not in any trouble. And then we also ask for the insurance and real estate taxes, because we want to make sure the building needs insurance, and we want to make sure the municipality gets their taxes, because, you know, if he doesn't pay his real estate taxes, the, the town can foreclose, and real estate taxes and mortgage, the church, take precedence over a mortgage and, and fiscal coverage. And then obviously, things happen down the road, there's floods, there's fires, things like that. We also deal with insurance plans, because we're additionally insured as a mortgage lender. So if there's a fire, the, the company knows, listen, we got bottom line, and also the restoration of the property for any damage caused. So that's like, that's like how we, you know, that's, that's like the due diligence and the oversight that goes on for multifamily housing project. And the last thing to talk about, um, with NCL, I asked maybe you include a slide, affordable home ownership, and sort of how that works. We, we also do affordable home buyer programs. We don't do the home buyer mortgages ourselves, but we do the construction loan to build affordable, um, home buyer projects. Those are typically like townhouse developments in Hudson Valley, um, as opposed to like the single-family detached homes, just because it's a more affordable way to build housing. And so I just wanted to give you an example of how, how a lender who's giving you a home buyer mortgage, and we don't, like I said, we don't do these, we just do the construction loan, but how they look at how much a buyer are, these buying hours. And they look at something which is probably called PITI, which is principal interest taxes and insurance. So if the principal interest on a mortgage that the home buyer is taking out, what are his annual real estate taxes on that house, their home, their condo, and what is the insurance that he has to pay for property and ladder insurance? And typically, lenders are only providing a mortgage up to around thirty-three percent household income to cover PITI, like principal interest real estate taxes and insurance. So this is a fake example, this is not a real example, I'll make this up. But let's say that we have a market rate, home price for four hundred thousand dollars, that's what the going rate is for this townhouse that I want to buy. And the Dutchess, meaning you look at county median income, the Dutchess median, median count, and you remember this is household income, so if there's two people in the household, that would include both, both, uh, both of the household members' income. So this is the median income in Dutchess County, it's one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year. That's the average income. Typically, with affordable ownership projects, we want to target people that are below average income, and that's usually eighty percent of the area median income or less. So if I take eighty percent and one hundred and fifteen thousand, you target people that have household incomes of around nine thousand dollars. Or the, if it's a two-person household, you know, they're, they're both making about forty, forty-five thousand dollars to the average, okay? So, if I'm gonna buy this four hundred thousand dollar home, and typically, I want to put down ten percent, um, I can, I can come up with forty thousand dollars, but I gotta borrow the other three sixty. And I think mortgage rates now, they go up every day, but I think we get a single-family home mortgage for around seven percent now for every year. So it's gonna cost me twenty-four hundred dollars a month, or twenty-eight thousand dollars a year, just to pay my PI, I've got a T in my head. So it's three thousand dollars for my principal, ten thousand for real estate taxes, uh, insurance. That means my total PITI is forty-one thousand dollars. I get, I can only, I get, I can only, I can only use thirty-three percent of my income, so I have to buy that at thirty-three percent. That means the minimum income qualified for this three hundred and sixty thousand dollar mortgage is around one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So I'm way over the average income for the county, and certainly way over the eight percent. So how do I, how do I solve for that? Well, the state has, U.S. state, uh, Housing Department, Housing Division, Housing and Community Bureau has, uh, affordable home ownership, state subsidy programs where you can get, uh, you probably just cannot, you can get up to a hundred and fifty from a developer, and I want to build an affordable townhouse project, I can get a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in state subsidy to subsidize the cost of the home. So that goes usually as a direct purchase credit subsidy to the buyer, okay? So this four hundred thousand dollar home that I couldn't afford, I'm gonna get ten hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so the subsidized sales price goes down to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now my down payment, I have to come with twenty-five thousand dollars. I only have the mortgage, two twenty-five. Now my monthly payment's only fifteen hundred for me. My man says, that's your age, but now my total PITI, oh, so, from a thousand dollars a year, if I divide that by thirty-three percent, I'm hitting my eight percent median income, sweets about ninety-two thousand dollars a year. And that's sort of how affordable home ownership game works in those types of projects. And, um...
I think we can stop there, we're pretty close, and I think we moved past like the larger kind of multifamily housing projects and stuff. But again, all these trainings are provided by Dutchess County Planning Federation, so they're all available online.
Great, thank you. We have a couple of minutes, any questions around the board? All seems pretty simple, right?
Simple, yeah.
Okay. Well, with that, we'll start our regular meeting. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the November twenty-twenty-four meeting of the City Beacon Planning Board. First item of business, we have August and October minutes to approve and enter into the record formally. It sounds, it looks as though we have the ability to do that with our attendance, so with that, I'll accept a motion to accept August twenty-twenty-four minutes of the meeting into the record. Motion, motion by David?
Second.
Second by Kevin, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I don't believe I was here in August, so I'm...
You're, we have two Epstein's, so, but that gives us, we're, we're good, okay? Who wasn't here in October?
Good.
Our odds are better. Um, motion by David to accept October minutes into the record.
Second.
Second by Karen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. And with that, we'll, um, start with our regular meeting agenda. First item is our continued review of applications for site plan approval, approval and subdivision approval, nineteen Henry Street Town Homes, submitted by Lori Joseph Builders. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Taylor Palmer with the law firm of Cuddy and Fader, on behalf of the Appken. Tonight, I am joined by Mike Bodendorf of Hudson Land Design. As you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, we are before you for a continued review of our subdivision and site plan application to redevelop the property for four two-story attached townhouses. As the board is aware, at your last meeting, the planning board issued a seeker negative declaration, and also closed the site plan and subdivision public hearings, and directed your attorney to prepare a resolution. In our supplemental submission dated October twenty-ninth, we did provide some point-by-point responses, I think, to the finer, final minor, mix those two words together, remaining comments from your engineer and your planner, which included some small revisions to the site plan and subdivision plat to address those and any of those architectural review considerations that were part of the application process. Since then, we did see the most recent comment memorandum from your engineer and from the planner noting that they have no additional or outstanding comments. So we did have a chance to review that draft resolution, and we did not have any substantive comments.
Great. Um, anything further to add from our planner or engineer?
Not for myself, no.
Great. Um, any other comments, notes, questions of the applicant or our consultants by the board? Great, then yes, we do have the draft resolution for preliminary and final subdivision approval. And so with that, it sounds as if everything is in order. I'll accept a motion to adopt.
Motion.
Motion by Karen?
Seconded.
Second by Len, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to our second item on our regular agenda, that being continued review of application for site plan approval, excuse me, site plan and subdivision approval, mixed-use commercial and residential, forty-five Beekman Street. Good evening again.
Good evening again. Now, for the record, Taylor Palmer, the law firm of Cuddy and Fader, on behalf of the Appken. For this next presentation, I'm appearing in connection with our continued review of the subdivision and site plan application for two proposed four-story mixed-use commercial buildings and multifamily residential to be located at forty-five Beekman Street.
Sorry, just really quick, for the record, we have a recusal.
Ah, yes.
Member Donna, thank you.
We'll see you momentarily. Um, tonight, I am joined by the project architect, R.A. Siegel, and our project engineer, Justin Dates. We understand that Ken may be on your video from Creighton Manning. Our traffic consultants are not with us this evening. We did just receive the city's updated traffic memorandum. We'll, we'll certainly prepare written responses, and Colliers will be here with us next meeting to do sort of a final deeper dive into the traffic pieces. Just by way of update to the board, at our September twenty-fourth meeting, as you all know, the planning board did refer this application to the ARB Subcommittee for Continued Review. REA did meet with the Subcommittee initially in October, on October seventh, at which time the Subcommittee provided preliminary feedback on the design, and they incorporated most of the surrounding development and urban landscape, so the design was updated then. In response to those comments, Mr. Siegel did provide some revised images of the Beekman Building, as well as some other changes that he's gonna speak to in just a minute. Usually I'll steal his talking points, but since Ms. Gray's got some guests tonight, I'll, I'll try and expedite it and not duplicate. REA will also be presenting some new photorealistic renderings of the updates, highlighting the ARB's additional suggestions from your meeting last week. So with that, REA... Uh, so with that, um, REA and Justin will also provide some updates on the landscaping plan and respond to some of your latest consultant comments about further activating the northwest corner, uh, at the intersection. The pictures do a lot of justice to the word, so I'll put it that. Lastly, with respect to the DOT, since we don't have our traffic consultants here, uh, we have, uh, continued to pursue our application to purchase that surplus property. Uh, we did receive confirmation from, uh, the DOT that it would include the High Street parcel, so there was some back and forth about who owned what lots. So, uh, the parcel that abuts Beekman Street and the Right-Away Mapping Division, what couldn't locate any, um, historic documents, sort of closed the loop there. So it, it's just a, it's a sort of semantic, but we'll be purchasing, uh, lands that we may have already owned. Um, with that, uh, our consultants will also be meeting with DOT, uh, to discuss the proposed signal improvements, uh, either next week or the following week. Um, we understand that there, a member of the public may have contacted DOT, indicating that, uh, the board was requesting a turn lane. So, uh, they've had a discussion with DOT, and Colliers has clarified that that wasn't the proposal, so the discussion will be about those signal modifications, both at Main Street and, and throughout the corridor. So, uh, with that, I will turn it over to REA to walk you through the updates to the plans.
Hey, thanks, Taylor. Good evening. Um, yeah, so we had our second meeting with the ARB Subcommittee on Friday, and it was very productive. We reviewed the continued progress, and the committee made some specific recommendations that we're looking to incorporate into the design. So we, we talked a lot about the connection between the landscaped corner area and the corner of the building to reinforce that as the main pedestrian entrance. They also asked us to look at, uh, options for the tower design to further reinforce that corner entrance. And then also the interface between the, you know, the brick base and the glass above it, where the residential windows are. And then also to look at a couple of storefront window color options. Um, that, you know, there, there are some other details, but, you know, we're, we're sort of narrowing down on what we're gonna be, uh, focusing on there. So I have some updated images that I just got. Um, we, we, we basically looked at the, you know, how the windows were being dealt with. Uh, those are more residential scale instead of being, you know, having a lot of mullions in it. One, one thing we talked about was a, a way to maybe reshape that corner tower to get rid of the, you know, the corner post that comes down, so we can open that up a little bit. So I'm, I'm gonna look at that for the next, um, get-together with the ARB. And then otherwise, you know, that, what I have now isn't in response to all the comments from Friday, 'cause that just happened, but.
Sure.
You know, we're, we're getting closer, and we're gonna respond to those for the next meeting. I, I went to High Street today, just to see what you could see from up there, 'cause I, I know we've been talking about getting views from there. It's still, um, I, I didn't, you know, break into people's houses, but from, in, in, from wherever I could get, it, it was still pretty tree-covered. I mean, you know, I, I don't know how long that stays, and if it's because it hasn't been really cold yet, but, um, you know, I mean, we could look at something up there and just ignore the fact that there's trees, just to get that view, but, um, you know, it, it was really pretty screened from, from High Street. So, um, but, you know, if, if, if you do want to see a typical view from up there, we, we can do that, but it, it, it's probably more screened than what would appear in the, in the rendering. So, yeah, so, so that, that was really the, you know, we're, we're looking at the corner landscaping, and once that tower gets changed a little bit, you know, that corner landscaping will change a little bit as well, um, 'cause, 'cause we really want to tie that in. But, um, you know, that's, that's pretty much where we are with the changes at this point. There's some additional views. You, you, you guys have the, um, version just before this, and then I got some updates this afternoon.
We, we have something similar to what you showed earlier.
Yeah, that, that, there's just some adjustments that have been made since then.
Yep.
That, that band between the second and third floor windows is, you know, more integrated with the rest of the coloring there. Because it was, it was kind of reading as a horizontal band, so.
Yeah, so it's evolving.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else just as far as your presentation?
Uh, not for the building, I don't know if you have anything.
Yep. Yep, please.
Justin Dates, Colliers, engineering and design. So from the last meeting, some of the feedback that we got, um, from the board had to do with a, a couple of revisions that we included in the latest layout and landscape plan. Uh, one was how we were gonna connect the Beekman and Nine, uh, corner adjacent to our property to that main sidewalk that we had around the building and the arcade there. So there is a, a grade elevation, or elevation change, two and a half feet, um, you know, thirty inches or so from intersection down to what we have as our finished floor. So we did incorporate a, uh, stair access as well as an accessible ramp to get down to that. So you could go right from the intersection down to and into, uh, where the arcade is on that, uh, would that be the southeastern corner of the Beekman Building? Um, and then we also modified where that, um, you know, we have just a couple of benches, some paver area, that sculpture display pad, uh, that we continued to show there. We moved that, uh, further west. Um, again, when we're talking with the board, you know, if that right-hand turn lane, say DOT did require that, uh, we tried to minimize, um, any impacts to the development of the, that hardscape and that landscape material there. So, um, it is set back a little bit further to accommodate, uh, those potential improvements for the right turn lane. Uh, we also, again, adjacent to the southwest corner of the Beekman Building, um, we looked to pull off kind of like a little seating area on the corner of the building there. Um, so you got two benches opposing each other, uh, as opposed to just out along the, uh, the frontage of Beekman, uh, kind of looks over our bio-retention area, that landscape feature, uh, there. And then modified, uh, modified the landscaping, uh, based on that, uh, layout as well. So those are the, the things that we took away from the last meeting, and then we'll incorporate into the plan.
Okay, thank you. With that, then we will, um, take a tour around our experts. Let's start with our planning consultant, just in terms of, I, I know that there are a series of comments that you've, uh, shared with the applicant in the past, and this somewhat applies to both engineering and planning. Um, you haven't necessarily used this, um, round of comments to reiterate your previous things that haven't necessarily been addressed yet, but you've used your, um, your comments, uh, this month for items new. So if you want to touch on those?
Yeah, yeah, um, yeah, I just focused on kind of the new material submitted and what was addressed in the cover letter as kind of being the changes and trying to address those with my comments.
Yep.
Um, so first comment is about architecture and design, and I think the, um, the notes from that meeting are attached, uh, to my comments and posted online, so didn't feel the need to reiterate those, just wanted to draw the board's attention to that, and I'm sure board members will, um, want to share some of those points. But some of the key ones, I think, um, at least one of the key ones comes up in my number two as well. Um, and not so much about the architecture, but about the access to that main corner, um, there. And so as the applicant, um, pointed out, I think there has been improvements there in terms of, of now at least allowing access, pedestrian access, um, to that, which I think is really supportable, um, for the, for where this building is positioned on this corner. I think there, my comment is, I think there is still some improvement, um, to be made, or some evolutions that can be made, both to the design of the corner, and then how that plaza sculpt, the proposed Plaza Sculpture Park and landscaping can all kind of work to, to create a real pedestrian entrance here, which I, I think we've made moves towards that, but, um, there's still some, some work that can be done there. And the piece, this is a reiterated comment from my previous letter. Um, and I think we, we saw some, what, there was a view with some of the landscaping plans. I think there has been some trees added, um, along, along the property lines to provide, I'm thinking shade and kind of green space and respite for folks. I left my comment about street trees, um, specifically kind of within the street transition zone, between the sidewalk and the roadway, just because, you know, and going through the linkage district code again, those are really identified as like kind of creating the pedestrian space, right? And so I do, I've heard the comments from the applicant about, um, how successful trees would be, kind of in that narrow strip. Uh, but I just wanted to retain that comment, because I think there is still value there about having kind of a vertical division between where pedestrians will be walking and where vehicles will be moving, um, not only for the shade provided by the trees, which can be achieved by trees up against the building, but for that kind of, that distance they provide and that separation they provide, that, that makes a walk more enjoyable along this. So I think that was my comment about whether we can still continue to explore that, and if that's something the planning board is having, uh, interested in having the applicant continue to explore.
And sorry, yeah, just for my own purposes, you're talking about this zone here.
Yeah, I think that's, I, and again, and so they're up against the building right now. They are proposing various, um, they are proposing various kind of, uh, shrubs and bushes and trees along that area. But again, that's in the building transition zone, not in the street transition zone.
You're talking about, then maybe the layer out closer to the curb.
Yeah, what we have in the street transition zone right now is that a red brick detail, which gives a visual, um, separation, which I think is, is helpful, and that's existing. Um, but continuing to explore the opportunity, maybe their benches, maybe it's trees, or just some kind of separation between this or extension of the sidewalk to really create a pedestrian space that is comfortable to walk along.
Yeah. Thank you.
And I guess I just have one comment based on, I, I, we keep referencing, and this maybe comes into my comment number two about the plaza. Um, I think the applicant said a number of times about DOT proposing or retaining the ability to propose a right turn lane, and so maybe if we could just speak to that in terms of, is that coming from DOT in your conversations with them? Or where's that, or is that just a potential, where's that idea coming from? You know, in terms of how, how real is that? If that's dictating some of the design that's happening here on the corner, it'd just be helpful to know where that's at.
I think the, the, uh, the question, uh, started from the board. Um, you know, is, as of right now, the DOT has not asked for a right turn lane, nor has our traffic study, uh, identified that it's, it's warranted at this time. It was more of, you know, trying to look into the future. If it were being, if it were needed, that we're not impacting it by putting, you know, how we accent this corner, right? And then it completely gets torn up, so they can put in this right turn lane, and you remove all the effort that, that the board and applicant has worked together to activate the corner. So, um, that's where that has, has come from. Uh, as we mentioned, we're still working through with DOT, but as of right now, they have not, you know, requested it or required it.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
And you said that the public, someone had reached out to them, and maybe said that we, that was being suggested. Do they seem open to that idea? Not at all? Okay.
No, no, I mean, there's, they're, they're still reviewing the application, but we haven't gotten any feedback from them that would indicate that they are gonna require that as part of this project. Oh, and the, so the, the meeting that's coming up that we're trying to coordinate with the DOT will, will include, um, the board's traffic consultant, Mr. Russo, and if there's someone on the board, we should notify as well, we can do that. But that should be, uh, we're hoping the last week of November. There's some key DOT, um, representatives that are trying to get all together to make that meeting happen, so. Can I speak to one, uh, one of the points?
You.
About the, uh, the street trees?
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, a comment we want to get, get satisfied or, or get worked out with, with the board. I think at last meeting, we also noted some of the, uh, existing utilities, water, stormwater, that are right there, adjacent to that curb line that we're speaking about. Um, so just another, another point that I want to, to, to bring up is, you know, why we're kind of leaning, uh, astray from that, that standard of putting the tree trees within that, uh, transition zone. And just look at, to, to create the most sustainable location for these, uh, and not force them into, um, you know, the standard per se. So if that's something the board has, has feedback on, um.
Sorry, I'm not, I'm not clear from what you just mentioned, what, what you, what you're describing as a restriction.
So some of the existing utilities that are on that, basically along that northern curb line of Beekman, where we're speaking of just off of that putting trees in, there's existing utilities right there that you typically would not want to put a street tree right on or, or even in close proximity to.
That's understandable, does it render that entire strip unplantable? Is that what you're saying?
I mean, there's one, there's one portion, kind of, it, we're in between the buildings, where one, there's a large stormwater pipe that kind of pulls a little bit away from the, um, the curb line. But we have proposed the trees there behind the sidewalk, just because that is more green space. We have green space there that, you know, professionally, I feel is more sustainable for those trees and that vegetation than putting it directly into, you know, a tree pit or on the, uh, the streetscape there.
So, yeah, that's understood, right? It, it makes, it makes sense that if there is a restriction by some physical construction underground, that's, you know, not conducive to growth. But again, if, if, because I, I, I think to a member, I won't speak for the rest of the board members here, but also based on the strong recommendation by our planner, that strip, as it was intended, should still be considered, uh, for areas where that, that particular restriction doesn't exist. Because again, if, if, if what you're saying, and I'm, I'm, I'm not sure, but if what you're saying is, is that the entire strip is rendered useless by utilities, then that's one scenario.
Yeah.
If just parts of the strip are being rendered not conducive to planting, then that's another scenario. That leaves other parts potentially available for study for conducive growth. So, I, you know, I'd cer- certainly like to understand which scenario is the, is the real scenario, right?
Okay.
Yep. That makes sense?
Understood.
Thank you. I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add to that?
No.
As we're talking about utilities.
No, I, I think there are areas that some tree plantings could be done along that strip. There are areas that, uh, would impact utilities, but there are other areas where the utilities do come off the curb line, and it's possible to put something in.
So scenario two that I just described is more realistic?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so we would, we would hope that you would look at that.
Okay.
And just to play off that, while it's not a tree, um, you know, to quote the REA Siegel architect, famous quote, uh, about trails and how, uh, therefore walking and not for sitting, we are incorporating benches. Um, it hasn't been shown fully, we did do a new rendering, so to the extent where we can't have a street tree to try and utilize some of that breaking up or encouraging the pedestrian experience, those might be the better locations for those other improvements that wouldn't impact the utilities. So we are mindful of that, but I think we can kind of work all of those into the design to reflect where they're better suited, above ground and things that might be better suited to go lower ground.
Now, now that, that note, my eighty-four-year-old parents were visiting maybe a month ago, and actually said, where the hell are all the benches? So, yeah, no, benches are also very welcome. Thank you. Mr. Russo?
Uh, we're still waiting for responses from our September comment letter, so, uh, they haven't really gotten back to the engineering at this point in time.
Yep.
We're waiting for that.
Great.
One question, if I may, just to put Mr. Russo on the spot. Um, we had spoken with the city attorney, just trying to get an understanding of if there are specific questions that, because, I mean, Colliers has been out there, they've, they've looked at and sort of dug up the whole history, hit right where the utilities are. They're speaking to neighbors about dye tests, you know, they're looking for, you know, illicit connections into the, you know, the service lines. So are there specifics, or, or might we suggest an offline discussion with, with Colliers just to kind of make sure we get those responses? Because we don't want to, as much as I, then we push right through your, your comment memo, but what if there are specifics that we can get to? Um, we'd love to be able to just put them into.
Okay. I mean, it was pretty documented in the September.
Yeah, we're pretty, we're committed to the design, I think earlier we were.
The ones that were already documented, the chairman responded to, those are the ones.
Well, so some of the, by name of the chairman, many have, have been, but we want to make sure we're, we're addressing those to, to, itemized. Because we've done a lot of work since the initial.
Right, but in the last submission, I received a response.
Right.
But no plans to show it.
Okay, understood, so, perfect, because we want to make sure that's included.
And actually it's done, you know, I don't think it's fully responded to.
No, and we, we want to do that for the next meeting, because we are hoping to work, start working towards, um, secret review and determination related to the project, so we want to make sure we get all that in. We will include that, because we're committed to the design now, I think, earlier in the process. You know, we'd only had initial communications with DOT, but we're, we're, we're much further along into their legal department, and now sort of the, the progression of, of that convention. sort of the, the progression of, of that conveyance component, so, you know, there's no, we're not going to leave any stones unturned, so at least that you need it for secret purposes especially, you know, knowing that there's always evolution of this at the back end, we'll get that to you.
That's, that's a lot of words for yes, sir.
Thank you.
Welcome back, Mr. Chairman, we missed you last month.
You know, they were saying how quickly last month's meeting went and that somehow Randall has a magic gift.
Then Randall's not here, you know, come on.
Thank you, I know we have our traffic, our city's traffic consultant on with us, if you're still there, we'd love to hear from you, Pete.
Hi all, Ken Worsted here from Creighton Manning Engineering, traffic consultant for the planning board, our comments have largely been addressed to date, the last submission that we had received included, in the September included an updated parking study, and we reviewed that and generally found the items to be technically correct, our only caution is just to be mindful of, you know, the tenants that go in there, namely the commercial ones, if there are tenants that don't generate a lot of parking demand, then I think you guys will be fine, if it's a, a high turnover, high demand type of use, then there could potentially be more demand for parking, and that could perhaps be very tight at certain times when the project, let's say, you know, a Monday or a Friday when you might have some apartment residents working from home, and the businesses that are there during the day are looking for those empty parking spots that would normally be there, you know, on a regular week, so just, just to offer a little bit of caution, you know, with that, and the overflow will, will potentially be high street, you know, in Tompkins if you reach that peak demand and, you know, there's conflict through there, so that was all we had on the remaining traffic items.
Okay, thank you, let's, let's understand that, because what I'm hearing is, is that there, there could be potential scenario, this is what you're cautioning, Pete, of what you, I guess, I'm sorry, Ken, excuse me, it says, oh, Pete, where's Randall, we need him, that there may be scenarios where there is a peak, just relative to, and I think you mentioned, you know, potential larger demand for residential parking on what is a simultaneous use scenario, right, so what, have, have we looked at, studied, you know, these eventualities that would push, you know, potential overflow in these types of scenarios to other off-street parking locations and, and, you know, again, I think there's, there's a significant sensitivity based on real-time experience of traffic, especially in this area, and parking also, so I'm curious, the applicant's thoughts on that and what analysis study or any empirical data you're able to share.
Channeling my inner Phil Greeley and Richard DeAndrea, who's probably playing golf, enjoying themselves, tonight, I would say that we are looking into that, we just received these comments today, but as you know, the city's parking regulations were only recently updated, so we did update our, our impact, you know, our, our traffic impact study and parking report to note that we have sufficient parking, so we did analyze that, as Rich would say and has said in our communications, of course, our study doesn't take credit for things like proximity to the train station or other multimodal forms of transportation, walking and the like, it's a very conservative analysis, so we don't sort of avail ourselves of what guidance, you know, IT guidance would typically say for this, so we have studied that, but we'll directly respond to Mr. Worsted's comments from today's memo, and Phil or Rich will be here next month, and they will also be presenting, we, we were going to present it last month, but without the chairman, we decided to hold off until you were here, but we'll wait till next month, so please be here in December, to do our, our visual, because I think you specifically requested, Mr. Chairman, of the, the vehicles, when the traffic signal improvements are included, showing the vehicle operation movements in that area, so it'll show a lot of that going into the site, coming out of the sites, there's a lot of that, that comes into this, but it has been analyzed, but we'll explain it in more traffic-specific detail.
Yes, the modeling we discussed.
Modeling, yes.
Thank you for holding that for when I'm here.
I think I just said, say yes, sir, right?
Yes, sir. Okay, good, any other thoughts on items we've discussed to this point, we can maybe drill a little bit more into the architecture, but before that, any other, just as far as any of the other topics, traffic landscaping, you want to address?
Is there any, I have one question, it's about the recently contemplated MTA developments and whether or not that would increase the amount of parking that would be down there and therefore increase the traffic.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look into that, we haven't yet.
You, you heard that, okay, it's about traffic from the MTA development.
Right.
Whether that would, and would any of these impacts be mitigated by any contemplated future turning lane or anything like that, I know you guys aren't, you, that's not part of your proposal, I understand, but...
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure what the analysis is when you include the turning lane, but I mean, we're, we're ready for that if that comes online.
Right, if the state takes on that part of the...
Right.
Problem.
So your, your response to, I think I heard you, your response to the question about the impact of the MTA TOD, you, you, you said you were going to, you're studying it?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that, that was very recent, so I don't think there's been, I don't think Rich has looked at it specifically yet, but we'll have to take that in.
Yeah, I'm just curious, it is, it's a brand-new RFP, what is, besides the parameters they're setting out?
We'll certainly look at it, yeah, I mean, again, it would obviously, any project would have to come before this board and be analyzed accordingly, so it's all aspirational, we don't know what RFPs will even be put out, so there is no even theoretical plans, it's three months before they would even have a potential, based on the site visit yesterday.
Submission.
Three months before they would have a determination of which groups they would consider.
Yeah.
If there are any proposals submitted at all, so we'll certainly have Rich look at that, but those are, you know, certainly aspirational.
Yeah, so again, I think my, the point I was making is that it's good, it's good to be looking at for what you can glean at this point in time, but certainly not definitive.
Right, and certainly not related to the project, right?
Yep, understood. Anything else?
Yes, on the landscape plan, I would like to echo the concern about street trees, the lack of street trees in the plan, and encourage planting them wherever possible, if they're not, if it's not possible for large stretches, I would urge you to consider other options to green the area between the, the street and the sidewalk, it could be permanent planters oversized that could be moved should construction work need to occur, we could plant things other than trees in the, in the zones that's where there are, where there are utilities so that they're not, it's not so impactful to potential repair work that needs to be done to the utilities, it's also an area that can be used to improve stormwater management, you could pull it out of the stormwater system into planting strips along the sidewalk, so I would, it's very, it's a wide street, it's pretty bleak, the trees that you have called out along the facades of the buildings don't have any canopy, they're columnar, they will not provide any shade, if there's some other alternatives that you could look into along the facade, I would encourage that.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
Are you gonna, are you gonna dive into architecture a little bit?
Yeah, if you guys are ready, let's move into, we're curious here.
Can I summarize a couple of things that we've been looking at collectively?
Yep.
We are, some of the, the most recent comments were on the spandrels, the metal panels in the, in the glass wall and whether they were kind of improving or taking away from the design, we were looking at the materiality of the clock tower and whether perhaps it might be something different than the, the other two types of bays, the brick versus the, the kind of glass curtain wall, we were looking at whether this column could possibly be removed to open up that pedestrian access to the arcade more, and also looking a little bit at the, the design coherence between the two towers that are, there's a tower on each building, they've kind of been morphing each of them throughout the different presentations, and just trying to figure out what the, you know, we've asked the question, should these buildings create their own context, or should they, should we look at any of the other sort of corner towers on Main Street, or, you know, there's a, we, we talked about, you know, some of the, there's a brick corbelled design detail on the brick bays on either side of the clock tower that may have been a little bit of a nod to the corbelled brick design of the old New York Rubber Company clock tower on Teheranah, but, but I think one of, one of my comments was, it still doesn't seem like the design is kind of coalesced, so, I don't know if I skipped over anything.
It's, yeah, that's a broad brush, sure.
So it's, those are the kind of the, the broad comments, and we're waiting to see, trying to hone it further.
Yep, so there's more, there's another meeting, I guess we still need a calendar for additional, you know, additional work, yeah?
Yeah, well, well, we didn't get it on the calendar yet, but, but, but I want to get that, you know, get the responses ready for that, and then, but, yeah, I mean, basically, you know, the notes I took and the notes that Natalie had and what Kent, Len is saying is, you know, that, that's what we're going to be focusing on.
Okay.
Can I ask one question, Ari, do you know yet how this is going to get structured, how it's, how the floors are going to be supported, is it like steel, concrete, wood frame?
Yeah, we, we haven't really gotten into that, but it'll, I mean, that'll go sort of hand in hand with the, with the design that comes out of it, but...
Right, because I think there's, there's, there's a lot of opportunities to work with the way it's structured, I mean, one of the things I mentioned was that the spandrel and window setup is more, it's sort of reflects a steel, steel frame, right, structural steel frame with infill, with a concrete deck, which is more like an office building, and if it's not built that way, this is sort of a decorative element, right, it's not as functional, and it's, 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 it's a, it's not really a great expression in my opinion, that's, you know, like I said before, you know, like it didn't seem very residential, it seems a little cold and industrial and office institutional, but that, that's why if, if, if you're doing a steel structure, you want a big fast spandrel panel to cover those beams, if you're not, there's no reason to have it built like that.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll definitely look at all those details.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm sure my, my opinions have been heard, because I've been pretty vocal about this, I'm always appreciative when an applicant obviously is, is working with the board and is listening, so thank you, because there are some, there is some evolution here that is headed in what I would consider a good direction, so, well appreciated, I do think that there is still work to do.
Yeah, and, and it was good to, you know, go through some of that with, on Friday with the committee, so...
Yeah, good, well, I'm glad, I'm glad it's productive, yeah, and I'll just, I'll just reinforce, right, and, yeah, I'll just keep saying it, because I think for this application and others, this is an incredible opportunity for, you know, the built landscape and beacon to represent something that is not just memorable to the users, but even almost iconic, and that's a, that's a real challenge that, you know, you, you have in front of you as a designer, it's not easy, so...
Yeah, and, and that's why it's good to have those meetings and get, you know, other perspective and stuff.
Yeah, I consider this a, a super important intersection within, I mean, they all are, but this one especially because of its visibility, because of the extreme change that's coming through this development to the, you know, just the vibe and the feel of that corner, we got to get it right, because we're going to have to live with this for a very long time, so...
I neglected one thing, we also talked about the, the metal window frames that project beyond the brick and just kind of how that expressed, how the design expressed itself, whether it was really complimentary to it and whether it would create any moisture management issues too.
Yeah, so more work.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anything else we can help you with this evening?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So then we will move to our next agenda item, the review of applications, let's see, review of application, where are we? 291 Main Street, we've, site plan approval, mixed-use commercial and residential, 291 Main, this is our first review this evening, and I get, I'm sure you can anticipate, you'll hear something from me around the architecture, among other things, but let's, let's dive in, welcome.
Another easy one.
Yes, thank, come on Donna, come on, let's wait till Donna gets seated again, another one?
Another easy one.
Yeah. Same challenges, different scale.
Yeah. Okay, so, so this is the telephone building property at 291 Main Street, the applicant is proposing to add a three-story addition in the vacant alley between the existing building and the car wash to the right, the addition fills in that gap and eliminates the existing driveway out to the Main Street, it screens the side of the car wash building that you can see through that sort of asphalt alley and acts as a buffer between the telephone building and the car wash property, so there would be a commercial space on the ground floor and a total of four apartments in the upper two floors, the parking is provided on-site for the residential use and could be used for a commercial parking during the day, we, we haven't done a formal study on that, so the applicant does strongly want to protect the historic nature of the telephone building, and they're proposing this design to complement the existing building as an adjacent neighbor without trying to copy it, we're following guidelines that the National Park Service recommends for adding to historic structures, and, and they're sort of the, you know, the document that is sort of the accepted standard for that, so the existing telephone building street facade, which have been carefully restored and maintained by the current and previous owner, will not be changed by the proposed addition, the addition is set back from the face of the telephone building, so that, you know, so the telephone building facade remains intact and maintains its integrity, the new building has details like other Main Street buildings in the historic district, so it becomes sort of like a fabric of Main Street and visually recedes from the existing building, and, and it's really, so, so the basic idea, it's designed to read as a separate building, that, you know, neighboring the telephone building without competing with it or trying to add on to it, but, but there's some, you know, complimentary things, the, the new facade has the three bays, it has a upper cornice, similar sort of scale windows, we're, we're using it like a gray brick, so we're not trying to copy the existing brick on the building, and we, we did look at other ways to design the facade more like as an addition, so like, like a fourth bay on the three-bay building, but that, that approach really affects the, you know, the nature of the historic building, and it would be difficult to make that work, you know, to, to get those details constructed now and, and really make it work, it, it's also not really a recommended method of adding on to a historic building, that the usual approach is to try to get something that, you know, complements it but doesn't compete with it or doesn't try to look like it was part of the, you know, existing original building, we also looked at the feasibility of doing a two-story building, but because of the size of the property and what has to go into it, that, that just isn't financially feasible, so we, we will provide, you know, the photorealistic renderings, but we just wanted to sort of get your take on the approach to this, you know, to just sort of being a, a neighbor to the building, acting as a buffer between the building and the car wash, but, you know, not, not really trying to look like it's part of that building physically. So, yeah, I mean, that's sort of the introduction of the building, I, I did want to ask if you would maybe recommend that people who want to comment on the design, you know, do so at the public meeting and, and not paste something on to the building, which is... is, you know, not the way to do it. It's kind of obnoxious and it's illegal, actually.
Sorry, what do you?
Somebody posted a, we know who did it, but somebody posted a little flyer on the, on the building door.
I'm sorry, what does that say?
It will destroy the symmetry of one of most.
Public comments not open yet.
Yeah, I know, but it's on here. It's on the building.
Well, so you're, you're already hearing from the public.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, well, you should listen.
And there's a.
So, it sounds like you are.
Yeah.
That's, that's an interesting format. I've never seen that before.
Yeah, I mean, it would be more productive if we keep it at the public hearings instead of pasting it on the building.
Yeah, I'm not sure we have much control over that.
Just a recommendation, maybe.
Was that some, that wasn't anybody on the board, was it?
No, I don't think so. I know who it is.
Yeah, again, you know, people can put up banners and flyers all they want, as long as it's legal.
It's not.
We don't have much control over it.
Even if it's not legal, we don't have control over it.
Exactly.
We're not the police.
So, well, this is what happens when, you know, you have applications that are available to public who have an opinion. So, let's, yeah, so let's dive in. I think firstly, you know, we obviously want to hear from our planner and engineer, but I'm most curious about something we reviewed in our call today, and that being the separate lots. This is a separate building. It doesn't have a communicating effect between the two buildings, but it's a separate new building on a single lot, the existing lot, right?
Right.
So, curious if there's any thinking about whether this in fact needs to be a subdivision in order to create a second parcel for this building.
Yeah, my, my, there's a section in the code that allows for separate, let me just see where that is.
Accessory?
Yeah, it's a 223-12, lot for every building. There shall not be more than one main building and its accessory buildings on a lot except for multifamily or non-residential buildings in districts where such uses are permitted. And I think, Bruce, I think we looked at that for another project one time and that seemed to be the interpretation.
Yeah, so, yeah, 223-12, it's basically saying every building should be on its own lot. I mean, I think you answered the question for me tonight was you're creating it as a separate building. So, I think it does need to be on a separate lot at this point.
Yeah, I mean, this says that in the district where it's allowed, you can have it.
It should be not more, it says everybody here in, hereafter erected shall be located on a lot as herein defined, and except this here and provided, there shall be not more than one main building and its accessory buildings on one lot, except for multifamily or non-residential buildings in districts where such uses are permitted.
Yeah, so I think, I think the exception applies here.
That would accept everything.
It's not, it's not permitted everywhere though.
What is the, what is allowed? You're saying that allowed is defining.
Yeah, if you want to, if you want to maybe take, you know, a little bit more time, I'm curious Natalie.
I'll take a little more time before the next meeting.
Yeah.
I'll have a definitive answer on it, but I think it sounds like it's being created as a separate building.
Yeah.
There's other things that would go along with that as well, but.
Okay.
But I'll get back to everybody on that.
All right, great, and then, thank you. And then this, this also may come up in your review Natalie, but the, the question of parking as it relates to what we're taking away from the existing telephone building and then, you know, it's the actual knock-on effect, the additional parking requirement for this building. Let's, let's talk about that as we dive into your comments.
I actually had an office in this building for four years and on multiple occasions we ran out of parking. So, adding 550 feet of commercial space and four apartments and reducing the area available for parking seems rather improbable.
Let's, let's talk about it.
Yeah, I mean, that was going to be my comment is pointing to the new section, the section within the new kind of parking regulations, right? Technically, the code gives a minimum of zero, right, and a maximum of 17, so the planning board can't determine that the required parking requirement for this project is anywhere between zero and 17. And the point that I think I wanted to drive, direct the applicant towards is the new parking code focuses on kind of looking at real-life examples within the community rather than kind of IT standards and things like that, right, to talk about what the required parking is here and then how your supply, the proposed supply is meeting that or how, how demand will be needed, will be met, right? So, looking at historic utilization, I think to David's point, looking at the historic utilization of the parking on the site with the existing office tenants, how is that currently being used? How will that be used in the future? I think you've kind of alluded to that you need additional information with regards to the parking, you need to look at that. So, I just wanted to really make sure that, I think this is an opportunity and a good opportunity to use that new section of the code that's relying on real lived experiences kind of in the local environment, in, in the city rather than more technical standards, right? So, that was, that was my comment.
Yeah, anything else you wanted to add, just to highlight for the applicant or the board?
You know, I think the one piece that I did want to add, that I'll kind of tie it in, comment number one and, and comment number seven kind of combined together, and Len and I were talking about this before the meeting, is 1A identifies that it should be clearly noted that this is in the historic district and landmark overlay zone according to the most recent map, so that wasn't noted as kind of on the zoning district section of the application. And then I think that plays into number seven where we have these, these renderings, but we don't necessarily have elevations with dimensions and material callouts and things like that. So, when, when moving forward with those things, I recommend that the applicant look at section 134 of the code, right, which is the historic section, specifically section seven of that, subsection seven of that kind of gives regulations. So, I think you started to talk about some of that, Ari, in your intro, but because of this and because of the focus on that, I think that might be a good kind of written submission with the next one of, of addressing how you believe your design kind of meets those requirements, both within the CMS district as well as the historic district overlay.
More like a narrative, you mean?
I think a narrative and your, and when you get your elevations, I think it'll be kind of combined of that, but there is a lot of shoulds and to the best extent possible and either this or that, so I think it would be in your best interest to make your case in a written narrative in terms of how you believe you're addressing those.
Can I add to that briefly? So, just, I wanted to get my background straight, so I just confirm that there was a resolution to designate 291 Main Street as a, as a historic landmark on August 2nd, 2021, the city council voted unanimously seven to zero to pass that. And that kind of focused me in on the, the elements of code 134-7 that say, you know, when possible, in addition to an historic structure, should be placed towards the rear or at least recessed, which recessed I think it is from the renderings, but ideally towards the rear, so that the historic structure remains more prominent than the subsidiary addition. Any alteration or addition to an historic structure shall not damage or obscure the character-defining features of the architecture or site to the maximum extent possible. And I think if we look at the renderings, it looks like the entire western cornice is going to be removed by the addition. And then the height of any new building facades in the HDLO shall not conflict with the heights of the adjacent historic structures on adjoining HDLO parcels. It looks like the addition is kind of taller, more prominent than the telephone building. And finally, there's even a little bit more specific under item C on, C2, under architectural elements. Historic storefronts, porches, cornices, specifically window and door surrounds where similar architectural features shall not be enclosed, obscured, or removed so that the character of the structure is substantially changed. And to me, the obliteration of that cornice on the west side of the building, you know, is just, I home in on that significantly as, as a, an issue, you know, given the landmark status designation by the city council and the, and the code, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else Natalie?
No, I think it was just, you know, more things when, when a fuller submission in terms of refuse locations, no storage, landscaping, those details as the, as the submission evolves.
Yep. Mr. Russo.
So, the applicant did perform an infiltration, an inflow study, an INI study. They did find the roof leaders are connected into the sanitary system, so they will be removing that as part of the project. We had some minor comments with regards to utilities at this time as well as extending drainage up to this area, but we're waiting to see as the project progresses, there's going to be more comments coming out of this.
Sure. Okay, so, yes, just as far as thoughts, comments, or questions around the board, thank you Len for sharing your research, but yes, please, Jennifer.
I just noted that some of the application forms weren't 100% completed, the application processing restriction form and then the entity disclosure form has a lot of blanks.
Okay, did he get back to you with that or, okay.
Yeah, he just ended up. Yeah, okay, great, yeah, so for the next submission, that completed.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, this being our first look at this and your sort of first approach to how to solve, again, smaller, but some very similar challenges, right? You know, my, my first sort of reaction to this is that we have sort of a scale and language sort of relationship context problem. And so, again, these are, these are just, you know, sort of initial reactions just relative to the fact that the telephone building has a very specific architectural language and scale and it's beloved, right? So, you know, we don't need to dwell on that. But that this, this new building is, is sort of performing as if it somehow, you know, doesn't acknowledge in any way, shape, or form the telephone building from a scale perspective especially and from continuity in terms of the fabric. So, and I, I can't recall them, but I have seen so many clever, excellent, successful examples of older language being complemented by new build in ways that aren't just, let's just jam a building in here without any kind of nod to, and then, and I'm, I'm really reacting to not just the height, because I think the height is a problem. And it's, it's height relationship, especially with that setback. And I can understand why the setback is being, is being introduced here, but both the setback and the height just create a kind of a really discomforting kind of effect on the, on the continuity and the fabric. And again, taking out completely the context of the car wash next door, because that's a, that's a whole different language and not one we necessarily want to speak to, because, you know, there is a better possibility that, you know, somewhere down the road in the future, that whole lot is subject to, you know, some form of development that will sort of tack on to what we're seeing here.
Right.
So, but I also think that the, the, the language and the relationship of the fenestration and the ground experience here between these two buildings is, is completely off. So, there, there needs to be a lot of thought and work put into this relative to how, how this building makes its way into this small lot in a way that makes sense, is comfortable from an aesthetic and from a, again, I'm always referring to this experience, this feel. It's not working in regard to that. It's not, it's not working in regard to how this is going to be perceived and felt at the street level and especially as it relates to this. And I'm not saying you got to copy the telephone building in any way, shape, or form. It's, it's just got to have a much better relationship to its context and its direct neighbor, the telephone building.
Right.
Again, these are broad observations, a real design challenge and one that needs to be handled, I think, really smartly and cleverly for it to ultimately end up being, because I've seen so many times, as I'm sure you have in the past, elegant solutions where the viewer, the experiencer says, ah, that makes sense, and they feel it. So, there's the opportunity here and it's not being, it's, and again, I know it's early, but there's an opportunity, we're not there yet.
Right, no, I, I know that it's going to need some development and stuff, but, but, you know, I just kind of wanted to get the reaction on the applicant's desire to do this as sort of, you know, I mean, the, the details of it, I understand we can go over, but, you know, there are references to, to the telephone building, but what he did not want.
A few.
Yeah.
I see, I see a champering at the corner.
Yeah, and three bays, cornice, I mean, all those things are not fully detailed yet, but, but those are, you know, what, what the applicant is nodding to. But, you know, I think what he really wants to know is, is that approach of, you know, sort of what's recommended by that standard, you know, park services idea of not trying to tie in directly and, you know, and then just making this like a neighbor that doesn't offend the telephone building, you know, so that's where development comes in, but doesn't tie in necessarily directly like that.
I mean, I can't give you a solution, I can't design this for you.
No, but, but I'm just talking about, you know, that approach before we, you know, get a lot further in developing one way or another.
I think you really got, you really got to look at the height and its relationship to the telephone building. I mean, look, I know you're allowed three stories here.
Yeah.
But just because you're allowed three stories, is this the right way to do it? That's the question. And then again, it's, it's, it's relationship and it's communication with, and again, you know, there, there are many ways that I've seen historically, right? We both, we all study this stuff of a, you know, of a disparate and different facade, different building communicating nicely with its neighbor, making a nod to and an understanding of its context.
Right.
This one doesn't.
Yeah.
Yes, I understand you've got the three bays, but even that falls short here. I'm talking about mostly in the horizontal plane.
Just out of curiosity, has the applicant considered whether they could develop a structure that, that fronted onto South Brett? And, you know, if they're looking to get residential apartments and it would, it would essentially complicate the parking issue further, but it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be challenging the facade, the Main Street-facing facade of the telephone building?
Well, one issue is that driveway isn't wide enough for two vehicles to pass.
Yeah, and you'd essentially, you'd end up with no parking, but you wouldn't have this issue of trying to create a new building, you know, that, that, that was directly adjacent to the facade of the telephone building and you wouldn't have to lose that detail on the west side of the building.
Yeah, I mean, that, that detail, you know, I mean, you really don't see a lot of that unless you're in the alley or something, you know. That alley is like an ice.
I've got the pictures on my phone to show it. It's really prominent. I mean, especially with the car wash, you can, you can see it as you come down the street.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can I, can I speak to that? I mean, the, the key iconic element about this building is it's the only building on Main Street that's three-dimensionally complete, right? It has a cornice that runs around, all around. It's a freestanding building like the Howland Center, like this is in the middle of Main Street. And there are other buildings like the firehouses that also are, they're iconic, right? You can identify them because they were consciously designed as landmarks, right? As, as powerful institutional monuments in towns, right? This is for a monopoly telephone company, they had the money to do this. I think that, that the thing that has to be preserved here in order to not diminish its impact is the fact that it's like, like the Parthenon, right? It's, it can be seen in three, on three sides, right? It's, it's a, it's one of the only buildings that's like that because it was built with that alleyway. And I think if you don't maintain that cornice going all the way around the back, right, absolutely. As, as powerful institutional, uh, monuments in towns, right? This is for the monopoly telephone company, they had the money to do this. I think that, that the, the thing that has to be preserved here in order to not diminish its impact is the fact that it's a, like, like the Parthenon, right? It's, it can be seen in three, on three sides, right? It's, it's a, it's one of the only buildings that's like that because it was built with that alleyway, and I think if you don't maintain that cornice going all the way around the back, right, absolutely, it, you lose all of its character, and I, I think that's, uh, I don't see how you can not diminish this building significantly without maintaining that critical aspect, you know? If you walk by it, it's the strongest thing, and it's unique, it's iconic, and, uh, also, you know, it, the building itself has all these characteristics that are high design, well proportioned, it's, uh, you have to, what you are doing isn't that bad in this, what I'm saying, as far as your approach of making it a background building that has traditional proportions and other things. It's in the, it's a wrong size, it's in the wrong location, and it, you have to, I, I don't think that it can, uh, pass the requirements that actually are stated pretty clearly in our code, i- unless you make, maintain its, 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 uh, the power that it has visually.
Yeah, it's a challenging lot, it's not even 16 feet wide, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's got all of that, so, you know, I can understand, like, because I'm, I've seen some of the public comments, I didn't put that sign up, but, um, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the comments are, you know, cramming, right? Cramming something in where it doesn't belong, right? And I'm, again, I'm just saying that the, the observations are, um, just valid relative to what's, what's being attempted here, not to say that, you know, it, it doesn't rule out that you, you have the ability to actually do this, it's just, that's, that's how, that's how right now it looks, looks like something's being just jammed in there, and, you know, there's really not much thought to it. So again, I know it's early, there's work to do, and, you know, thank you for hearing our comments.
Okay, no, I'll, I'll talk to the applicant about that.
No, nothing else.
Yeah, Donna?
I have several things.
Microphone, please.
Yeah. Well, we, we talked about the width of the building, it's pretty narrow, and there are no windows on, you know, what I'm looking at, so I'm just wondering, what is the size of a lot, you know, for, for building something? Can it be, you know, like 12 feet, 15 feet? What is the size of a lot? Is there some kind of, of form or something for that? Is there, is there a lot size, is, is my question? Because this is just so, so narrow, and then what's to, to stop us from then putting in buildings like this in every alleyway, and there are a lot of alleys in, in Beacon, so, you know, you can cram one of these things in, so I'm, I'm just wondering about what, what those repercussions could be.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a good point, Donna, thank you, I think, you know, that's, obviously there's a distinction between an alley and a viable lot, right? So, yeah, we wanna make sure that that's clear.
I can just, real quick to respond to that, in the CMS district, um, there is not a, a minimum lot width, which there is for some other districts, there is a minimum lot depth, um, in feet, which is, uh, 75 feet for the lot depth, um, there's not a minimum lot size area, um, there are some yard requirements which are noted in their bulk table, um, and height restrictions, so just, just that, but I think, I, I, you know, I guess the other, it might get a little bit more into building code too, in terms of minimum, I don't know if there's minimum, um, widths of like, habitable spaces or, or new structures, if they're not gonna, if they're not additions, if they're kinda.
Yeah, there are, but they, he would meet it with the 12 feet though.
Donna's comment also though, makes an excellent point about precedent, and I'm reminded of the fact that, like, when we were reviewing the Cross Street, uh, project, the corner of Cross and Main Street, that the addition above the existing buildings, there was a recommendation in the initial design to remove a facade element, um, which we asked them to retain it, and they agreed to do so, and I think what I'm, what I'm pointing to here is that, um, decisions made to make an addition to a landmark building that obscure a significant architectural feature are precedent setting for the planning board for Beacon, and I think we have to also be really aware of that.
Yeah, well said. What else can we do for you?
I think that's, uh, I will speak to the applicant about all this, and come back with something.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Yep.
Oh, you got it, okay. All right, for, for, for both of the ones?
No, just the end.
Oh, okay, all right.
All, all of you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, that takes us to item four on the agenda, uh, that being review of applications for site plan approval and subdivision approval. You again? Are there any other land use attorneys in town?
I took care of them all.
This is for, uh, this is our first look as a board, a mixed-use, commercial and residential, um, thingamaduki configuration at 420, 430 Fishkill. Good evening again.
I like that introduction, uh, I'm Taylor Palmer, I'm one of the two land use attorneys in the room, uh, joined by Ms. Gray. Uh, for the record, uh, I am joined tonight, uh, by our project team, including Chris Raffielli, our project architect, uh, Dan Kohler, uh, from Huntsland Design, and our traffic consultants, while not here, are also from Colliers, Phil Greeley, and Rich DeAndrea. Tonight, we're also joined by the applicants, Dwight, uh, and Jay Healy, as well as Matt Deister, uh, of ADI. As the chairman mentioned, we are before you this evening in connection with our new application for a subdivision and lot merger, as well as site plan approval, approval to merge the three lots that comprise the existing property, and adaptively reuse the existing building for a proposed mixed-use development, including a Dunkin' Coffee House, an accessory drive-through, additional first floor commercial space, and three residential units, uh, on the first floor. So before I do turn it over to Chris and Dan to review the site plans, uh, that were submitted in our application, I did just want to give you all a quick background about the proposal, and for the benefit of the board, give you a quick overview of the property for those that aren't familiar. Of course, we were just recently before you for the Carvana application, so we're right next door, um, as is fully detailed in our planning board application submission dated October 29th, and as was discussed with city staff at a pre-submission meeting on, uh, September 18th, the applicant is proposing to adaptively reuse portions of the existing premises, which were formerly used as the Healy Ford Car Dealership, we were previously there for Carvana for the Hyundai dealership. Currently, the property is improved by an existing one-story, uh, partially two-story building and associated paved parking area, so it's fully paved, uh, on the site today. The property is presently classified in the GB or General Business Zoning District, not in the HDLO, uh, and it is, uh, adjacent to the Heavy Industrial, uh, Zoning District, again, also next to, uh, the former Beacon Rail Line, uh, being considered for the rail trail. So the surrounding area includes a mix of industrial, commercial, and residential uses, including a gas station, laundromat, restaurants, professional service offices, auto repair, uh, and two, of course, former car dealerships, one, of course, that's recently converted into Carvana, and then some single-family residents, of course, as you step back, uh, away from 52. We are proposing to reuse portions of the existing building as a Dunkin' Coffee House, an accessory drive-through. The coffee house, uh, which Chris will get into more detail, will comprise 20, uh, 2,495 square feet, and it will be located within the northern portion of the first floor of the building. The proposed drive-through is customary and incidental accessory to the Dunkin' Coffee House, as you all know, in 2019, uh, or for those that don't, uh, Dunkin' Donuts pulled a McLovin, or for those, uh, here tonight, uh, they may call it a seal, or a prince, if you prefer, uh, and changed their name to just Dunkin', so they got rid of the donuts, uh, representing a shift to their coffee company's, uh, main product, which is selling coffee, so to the chagrin of Homer Simpson. In any event, we understand that the shift was in fact nationally, uh, Dunkin' Coffee shops were selling approximately 60% of their coffee and beverages, so that's, you know, the principal, uh, sale from theirs, uh, usage. For those keeping track at home, this Dunkin' Coffee House is, uh, located directly across the street when there was a former Dunkin' Donuts, um, and so assuredly, this is a permitted coffee house, uh, where one was located for decades directly across the street. Should also be noted, as I'm sure many of you experienced personally, that Dunkin' utilizes and relies heavily on the drive-through service for mobile ordering, uh, to provide customer experience that the customers have come to expect. Dunkin' has been using mobile ordering applications for over a decade, recognizing that patrons reliance on the growing utilization of mobile ordering, uh, and phone applications, pre-ordering, and other mechanisms to expedite the preparation process, uh, that they continue to invest in drive-throughs, uh, throughout, uh, the area. The drive-through's operations have become a practical necessity, uh, relying on this online ordering system, and in fact, we're only aware, uh, in fact, we're aware of at least two Dunkins, uh, near the property, including the one I mentioned that was across the street, at 435 Fishkill Avenue, and of course, there was the one at the, uh, former Snoke, or well, still Snokeo Gas Station across from Fishkill Town Hall, also further down 52, both of which have closed, uh, not including the drive-throughs, they did not have drive-throughs. Um, shifting, uh, to the balance of the project, which aligns with the uses permitted in this district, and some of the goals, uh, that have been presented by, uh, the Fishkill Avenue Committee, who we've been following their meetings, uh, quite diligently, the remainder of the first floor of the building, uh, will be, uh, available for office or retail use, and the second floor of the building will be developed with three residential apartment units, so this is a full mixed-use, uh, adaptive reuse of the building and, uh, the site plan. At the end of the day though, this is just an adaptive reuse of the existing building that's already constructed. The whole site, for the most part, is impervious surfaces, which the applicant is working to green some of that space and sort of create linkages and connections to, uh, residential areas and other, um, components that, while not completely shown on the plan yet, will be responsive to the planner's comments, and I imagine comments we'll hear from you all tonight. I would note, while we do typically receive traffic comments after the first meeting, we do appreciate that the traffic consultant prepared them tonight, so you, I guess you don't have to authorize him to do so, so, um, we have those comments now, and we'll certainly take a look, um, but if Phil or Rich were here, uh, they would note that the traffic study that we did prepare for this application shows that the proposed project is not anticipated to cause any significant impacts on the overall operation or traffic in vicinity. We did, uh, propose certain access modifications that will allow for channelized movements, uh, on the property, including into the parking areas and the drive-through queue in the bypass lane, we'll get through that, as Dan will walk you through sort of the site plan. Um, the proposed drive-through lane has a area for queuing of up to 12 vehicles, um, that amount will not impact site circulation, and it represents really the typical maximum queue length observed at, uh, coffeehouse locations. The traffic impact study also demonstrates how the proposed 41 parking space layout is consistent with the maximum parking standards in the new parking law, uh, adopted. Lastly, because it was a discussion we had at the Carvana application, it should be noted that certain of the improvements that already exist, uh, today on the site, some of the improved parking areas, may encroach into the MTA's vacant, uh, land that abuts the property. When we submitted for the Carvana application as a condition of that approval, we did include this property at that time, so that MTA would treat this whole, you know, encroachment in one application that was a recommendation of MTA, so that process is ongoing. Um, we would note just two other procedural items, as we move forward, of course, we're a subdivision lot merger application, so it will be a formal subdivision plat, uh, that would be associated with that, merging these lots into one lot. It is designed to be fully zoning compliant, so we do not have any variance, uh, needs from the zoning board of appeals, uh, it is also a type-two action, under seeker, and with that, I will turn to, uh, Dan Kohler to walk through the site plan, and then Chris Raffielli will review, uh, the architecture.
Thank you, Taylor. Good evening, everyone. So Taylor hit on a lot of the points here, uh, the, the site is 100% impervious right now, uh, and there's no channelized entry or exit from the site, so there's cars that come in and out wherever they want along that Fishkill Avenue corridor, so during our September 18th, uh, pre-application conference, we spoke about some of these things, about trying to channelize entry, also providing some pedestrian walkways, so what we've done is created a, a site that has curbing and, uh, green areas and sidewalks, which is obviously what's not there now. In doing so, we're able to decrease the impervious area on our site by 24%. We're adding a little more green into the right-of-way as well, so we're providing somewhat of a streetscape here, along with some street trees along Fishkill Avenue, and we'll be considering, uh, the MTA application that we have, we'll be reducing impervious that's on the MTA property as well. So, uh, net overall, we're losing more than just the 24% of the impervious on our site, we're actually losing more impervious in the backside, and also within the right-of-way. So, important with this is obviously the pedestrian and vehicular movements in and out of the site, and, and within the site, so we provided, uh, some work along with Colliers, who prepared the traffic impact study, so we've taken some of their queuing into consideration, and we spoke about ways of, of circulating traffic in and out, uh, came up with a two, uh, and, one-way entry on the south side, and a two-way entry in the middle to the site. Obviously, you know, there are some comments that we can go over in a little bit if you'd like, but there was some talk about possibly shifting some of those entries, we would have to defer a bit to our traffic engineer on that as well, especially within proximity to Townsend Street intersection, and then across the way with the gas station with the four-way intersection that that would make, so, uh, we'll be willing to talk about that, obviously. Uh, we've shown some conceptual landscaping on here now, just to, you know, just to give an idea of how we can green this site up quite a bit. Obviously, we want to get some blessing on the site before we get into the details on the landscaping, same with the lighting, we're gonna be taking out all the lighting that's there now, we have large, um, poles, similar to what we had at Carvana, with the large floodlights on them, we're gonna be going over to more modern lighting, LED, down lighting, you know, shielded, uh, appropriate for new site development. Water and sewer, we're looking into that, we can't find the sewer just yet, we've tried very hard, uh, but I haven't been able to find the sewer that serves the site, the, the building right now. Uh, we did find water service line, and have shown that, and, uh, to John's point, we, we may need to increase the size of that, or make a new connection as well, so, we'll be working on that, and, and one of the big pluses of, of dealing with a site when you're reducing the impervious so much is that we're actually, obviously, reducing stormwater runoff inherently by just creating green areas, so, uh, that, that pretty much takes care of the civil component at this time, I think I'll turn it over to Chris, he can talk about some of the architectural components of the site.
Sure.
Uh, good evening, Chris Raffielli with Studio Architecture, we're the project architects. Uh, so the building, um, let me get to the floor plan so I can walk you through that first. Uh, so here is the proposed grade floor plan, on the north end of the building, on he, this end, will be the Dunkin' Donuts, which is currently the service bays of the garage. The remaining space of that service bay component, which is single floor, a little high, but it's a single floor, uh, will have a retail component. Then on the south end of the building, which is currently, um, uh, support office space, uh, will become either retail or office, depending how, how the leasing works out, but Dunkin' here will become the primary anchor for the building. The centerpiece here is the entry to the second floor, uh, that will include, it currently includes a stair, we're gonna add a, um, a lift to get to the second floor. Uh, here is the second floor, so we're looking at the roof of Dunkin', and that smaller retailer, the second floor will be divided, currently, we're thinking three different units, they're all hanging in about 1,000 square feet, uh, lift in here with common corridor, um, all of the components here, all of the entries here will be facing, uh, Fishkill Avenue, that would be considered the front of the building. Uh, the building design itself, um, is, while Dunkin' is the anchor, uh, we didn't, didn't want it to be known as the Dunkin' Building, so we used a bit of their, uh, components on the balance of the building, kind of a, a mix of metal and hardy plank, um, composite type of materials for, um, continuity around the building, so that kind of design carries around four sides, um, even though we have backs of buildings here, they're still, uh, viewed by potentially the rail trail, and also the drive-through people. The building stays the same in footprint, we've changed the volume slightly, um, we've added a bit of a stair tower here to become the beginnings of the design of a marker to the, become the entrance to the second floor. Uh, so here are the primary entrances for the Dunkin' space, the retail space, the entry to the second floor, and whatever sort of use becomes on the south end. Uh, here is looking from Fishkill kind of northeast, uh, this would be the second floor. Second floor design is not really flushed out, you know, this whole thing is sort of a first blush, uh, we don't really know exactly what the demising of the units upstairs would be, so, so this piece up on the second floor is likely to change a bit. Um, and here is looking southwest of, at the pickup area on the back of the building, here is Fishkill on this side, uh, this is the, the drive-through pickup window. That's the building.
Thank you. Anything else from the applicant? So I'll share some of my initial thoughts, um, like, any time you have a site like this, where, you know, when we're talking about site improvements like curbing, managing ingress and egress through traffic better, adding landscaping, all of that's always going to be a plus. Uh, it, 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 I, it never means that the ultimate end result is going to be a success. So, so to, to, again, I'm always, I'm always for, you know, reducing impervious, I'm always for adding landscaping, I'm always for, you know, improving the streetscape and the experience of the pedestrians. I'm always for, you know, improving the streetscape and the experience of the pedestrian. All of those would be advantages, no matter what you do with the building here. That being said, this has got to be the worst example of adaptive reuse of an existing building I've ever seen. So, and that's not in any way, shape, or form denigrating the proposed anchor tenant. That I understand. What I mean is, when you're creating an environment, again, where there's this experience of it as a destination, mainly as a drive-through for the anchor tenant, but also for potential office and potential retail, and also potential residents on the top floor, it's abysmal. The, just the thinking about this as a cohesive environment, where all of those uses coexist in a way that's actually attractive to the users, I don't believe it. So there's a lot of work to be done there, and it's beyond just the aesthetic, right? And then, so let's get to the aesthetic. Basically, you know, when we're looking at the office space around the corner, it's basically taking three existing garage bay doors and adding glass to them. It looks like it was once, you know, a car dealer. So, you know, it doesn't speak to anything around, you know, good design, the proportions and the scale of the adaptively reused, whatever part of that building is, is simply just adding-
The old showroom.
The old showroom. It's just adding, you know, finishes to, you know, an existingly horribly proportioned building. So, I don't know. That being said, there's a lot of other technical aspects to this that I know we're going to dig into. I'm just giving you my first salvo in terms of this application in Beacon, on this part of 52, that's currently under, you know, real deep study as far as potential rezoning. And when you think about potential rezoning, you automatically think about, what do we really want here? And I'm going to say, as a resident, not this.
All right. Let's talk about permitted uses.
Yep.
Well, just to be, if I may, just-
Was adopted in 2005. So things that were taking place prior to 2005 are not indicative of how, what that definition means.
Yeah, and I just wanted to interrupt just a second there, Mr. Jen, just to reiterate, just to speak back to Mr. Gunn's comments, because they were pretty directly upfront to what we're proposing here, which are all permitted uses in the district. So, and I don't want to get into a use discussion, because that's not presently before this board, and I'll defer to the city's attorney in that discussion. But with all due respect to the chairman, I mean, the application here, this could be adaptive reuse today as a car dealership.
I'm not arguing that.
So you, if the preference-
That's not what I said.
But you said, what's proposed is the worst. You don't want to see it, but you'd prefer to see a car dealership-
No.
At the location, okay. I just want to be clear of the uses that are-
That doesn't necessarily follow. What I'm saying, and I'm saying this out of context of allowed use, I'm saying what I'm seeing here as a resident on 52 in context of a community that's currently studying what we do and don't want to see here as a resident, it's not this.
Understood.
And I'm not putting that in context-
Right, and we're not at the, this is the first-
So don't take what I'm saying out of context in relating it back to allowed use, because that's not what I'm talking about.
But I'd ask you just to elaborate, Mr. Chairman, just because for the benefit of the applicant and their consultants who are here. Is it the fenestration, is it the design, is the color? What is, you mentioned that reusing the showroom is not what you would propose to do here. What, what-
There's plenty of, I think, still discussion to be had on architectural review and the-
Of course.
The architecture of this. So, and again, short of designing it for the applicant, I'm saying they really need to think about what they're creating here as a, as an aesthetic element in the community, and also as an experience for users.
Understood.
Just as I did the last application. Again, those are broad terms, but I'm speaking of those from the perspective of not only a human being existing in an environment experiencing things like this, but also as an individual who has studied these things for 30-plus years-
Understood.
As well as the applicant who's hired a professional who's also studied these things and is about community-making, placemaking, and an environment, again, in context of a city that I care greatly and deeply about. So-
In the context of what was a Dunkin' across the street from this exact location, just to be clear of, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Jen, but I have to be clear that this is, it's an application that's proposing an adaptive reuse directly across from where the same use-
Let me put it this way. Again, I understand that there was a Dunkin' right across the street. I'm not saying that because of that, I'm not saying that, that, what I'm not saying is that a Dunkin' is not something that I want to see here. What I'm saying is I've also seen mixed-use developments with coffeehouses like Dunkin', designed and built very well and taking better into context the pedestrian, the user, and the other, and the other surrounding environment.
And if I may, maybe I'll take from that, Mr. Chairman, and note, which we have through the application, which we're going to evolve further based on the planner's comments, which are, for example, including sidewalks and curbing in the area that integrates connections to Townsend, potentially a crosswalk to go to the Townsend property, bringing, again, pedestrian access and sort of-
That's good to know.
Interacting with the street-
That's good to know.
And of course, potentially a rail trail connection that's not yet shown on the plan, but these are the comments that we're hearing. So I want to be clear. These are activations. These are pedestrian, you know, accompaniments, and to make this a more activated-
Let me sum it up for you. Because you know me, you've heard me in the past make very broad, which you could-
Which is why I'm calling you out, that's why I'm calling you out tonight.
Incendiary comments. There is a lot of work to do here.
Yes.
Right? And so, again, I want to be clear. I'm not saying, I don't want to see a Dunkin' Donuts in my community. That's not what I'm saying. Or Dunkin', forgive me. That's not what I'm saying. And again, I'm not saying these things in context of allowed uses. I'm saying them in context of the environment and placemaking, right? And again, it's good to know. You're thinking about the pedestrian experience. You're thinking about a connection to the rail trail. All of those have to be thought about in a cohesive way so that it's not just, oh, great, well, they've given us this concession rail trail, and they've put curbs in, so everybody should be jumping up and down about the rest of it. That's, that's my point. Those are all good, but those are table stakes. And those are diversions, in my view. It's great that you're doing those things, and we certainly want to see them. But those are diversions from ultimately the end result, which is basically lipstick on a pig.
And if I may, there, I will respectfully disagree. They are recommended by your planner, but we are going to incorporate them, I believe, into our plan. Those lipstick pig components are pieces of making what is a car dealership a better-
Forgive me, I'll clarify. The aesthetic I'm looking at.
Understood, the building.
The aesthetic of the building, not the elements of rail trail and curves and stuff. Those aren't, those aren't lipsticks on a pig. The aesthetic is lipsticks on a-
And as always, we are, we're here with our professionals, and the applicants are here hearing this.
Great.
And you know how we work with our teams to make sure we address these comments.
So I've done, I've achieved what I've came here to do tonight in relationship to this application. I got your attention. So that's all I wanted to do, and I'm not going to design it for you. We'll leave it there.
Right.
And what I want to impart is that I think I speak for a large part of the community here in that we've got to be really, really sensitive, really, really careful, more and more, especially now, about what we're introducing in terms of the experience, the aesthetic, the contextuality. We're talking about the built environment. We're talking about placemaking. So, I'm not done. So when I'm done, you're more than welcome to add your comments. So, that being said, just take what I'm saying as I've done in the past. I've been very vocal, and again, on broad terms, for a very good reason.
I'll write it down, but I won't draw it, because you won't like my drawing.
And again, short of designing it for you, which I'm not going to do, and I'm, I have great trust in myself and the rest of the board when it comes to architectural review, that the work will be done. So, but I'm saying, as an opening salvo, there's a lot of work to be done here, okay? So I know you're listening. I know the applicant, I know that is listening. I know the architect is listening. And I know they don't like to hear what I'm saying, but it has to be said. So with that-
Yes, sir.
David, yes.
Oh, David, yes, please.
This very clearly does not fit the definition of restaurant. And statements by the applicant's attorney that this is a permitted use, no matter how many times they are repeated, does not change what the code says. Has there been a determination that this fits the definition of restaurant?
Jennifer, I'm just going to, yeah, defer to right, directly to you.
So, no, it's a valid question. No, Taylor, it's a valid question to ask if there's been a determination. David is not trying to make the determination himself. So it's a valid question. I think the issue is not just the definition of restaurant, but what the applicant is saying is that it qualifies under the coffeehouse. Coffeehouse is also a permitted use in the district. But ultimately, it's the building inspector's determination to make the call as to whether or not it's a permitted use.
So a coffeehouse, if I may, which was not provided in the memorandum by the planner, is a retail food establishment whose primary business is the sale of coffee. As I mentioned in our presentation, 60% of sales are that, and other non-alcoholic beverages, and where food service, such as the sale of baked or deli goods, donuts, and others, I'm sort of illustrating there, is secondary to the sale of beverages. So that's a coffeehouse use, as defined in the code.
Yeah, if we're going to keep referencing my letter, I would, I would like to chime in a little bit here. Yeah, so to that statement, right, restaurants and coffeehouses are listed as permitted uses. The application's materials already included the definition for coffeehouse, which is why I did not include it in my letter, but I instead included the reference, the definition for restaurants, which expressly excludes fast-food restaurants. So in my mind, I think it's not so much, I think, I think that the, the argument could be made based on the definition of our code, that what we have for coffeehouses is that this could be deemed a coffeehouse. Again, that determination falls to the building inspector. I think the question, the other question, the second part to this question, is a drive-through and whether a drive-through is incidental and customary to a restaurant or a coffeehouse, or if that is incidental and customary to a fast-food restaurant, which is expressly prohibited, right, from this area. So, well, not expressly prohibited, right? I think there is a gap in the code in that fast-food restaurant is not a defined term. The only time we really see it is in the definition of restaurant where it says, restaurant does not include fast-food establishment, right?
But fast food is not defined, correct.
Yeah, but fast food is not defined. So there is ambiguity in the code here about this. I think the applicant is making an argument about one type of classification and then making a secondary argument that drive-throughs are incidental to that use. I think that this is an important question, I think, both for this project, but also just the city, because these terms are not defined in the city, drive-through or fast-food establishment, that it is worth this one having a, an official kind of zoning determination to classify this so that we can reference this going forward, because I think it is important and has come up in conversations with the Fishkill Avenue Concept Committee about whether or not drive-throughs should be permitted. So I think this is important so that that committee can know how to proceed in potential suggested revisions to the code.
And if I may, just to piggyback off that, and I, while I thought it would be a little too much to play the actual clip of Mr. Clark, I will quote him directly from his December 4th, 2023 meeting, when this committee was being created, quoting John Clark at an hour and 15 minutes into the meeting, "There's nothing preventing somebody from putting a fast-food restaurant with a drive-through lane right now in the GB District on Fishkill Avenue." Those are my words, "on Fishkill Avenue in the GB District." The planning board would not be able to push back on that because it's not disallowed in the code. So let me elaborate just a bit further. There are two districts-
Fortunately enough, he's not the one who gets to make that determination.
No, no, and I'm just, if I'm just, just a bit more. There are two districts in the city's code. I'm just, I'm illustrating for the building inspector who will make this determination, and we would love to have a conversation offline about the specific determination, which we thought we had done during a pre-submission meeting. But there are two districts in the city's code that explicitly prohibit drive-throughs. This district does not prohibit drive-throughs. There are specific districts that were enacted in the city that prohibit them. This is not one of them. So we'd ask for leave to speak with the building inspector about the use.
Right, when a use is not listed as a permitted use, then it is not permitted.
Well, a coffeehouse is permitted explicitly.
Drive-through is not.
And a drive-through, we have the case law, we could certainly speak to the city attorney, again, to the building inspector about how, what is customary and incidental and accessory, and how drive-throughs for Dunkin' Donut coffeehouses are.
And again, I think that's just an important conversation to be documented and had.
Agreed. Right, but again, just for the benefit of the record, planning board does not consider use in its determination, but it is a point that we can discuss with the building inspector.
Okay. Okay, that is helpful insight. You referenced the Fishkill Avenue Committee, and that was something else I thought we ought to be talking about here. The site plans are talking about building out the sidewalks and planters 13 feet into the road. The committee is considering the future use of that street. I know at least one proposal they're looking at involves bike lanes. How would that impact this? Would they, if you built out as proposed, would they have the ability to put bike lanes in if that's where they wanted to go with this?
So we are certainly considering that, and I think the committee has a couple different levels of how wide they're considering the road, which side of the road would have sidewalks, if not both. So the plan as proposed is trying to green up that area, but nothing's to say that that couldn't be adjusted if that were ultimately, you know, if a decision were made on how the committee was going to move forward. But, you know, again, it's still, these are only being considered. It's not a formal recommendation, but we are, we're certainly following those recommendations. But we've included a sidewalk. We don't have to, but we think it's a better operation to try and function to get, allow people to come from Townsend and to come to the potential for the rail trail connection. So there's only, you know, we're certainly considering it. If there is some more formal input to that extent, we're certainly not going to object to a narrower sidewalk or pulling it back from 52. I think that would be appropriate, but we're certainly considering it. But there's a number of different sort of opinions and options that, as I understand it, that the committee are considering.
From a consistency perspective, we talked about this during the Carvana application. We talked about complete streets and the importance of having room for sidewalks and bike lanes. And so we don't want to have a gap-toothed in our overall streetscape. So it's important that these things are consistent and planned out in a way that they're compatible, right?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's pros and cons to this kind of thing, right? I think wherever you can, because these projects do cost a lot of money, that I think there is value to having property owners and developers help you build out this infrastructure and provide some of these amenities rather than waiting for, for the full, for the full thing to come along. But again, I think that's one of the questions, one of the comments in my question is that these improvements are cited in the public right-of-way, right? So that would have to be something that is reviewed and approved by the city. I think to the applicant's point, the recommendations of the committee are nowhere near to a point where they could, they're necessarily put on paper to be recommended. And again, those also would not be adopted. They would not be code. They would be recommendations to the legislative body, the city council, to consider. So it's hard, it's hard, you know, but I get it, because it's, you could have, with sidewalks and some landscaping space, you could start to have a vision that I think, and I have said this multiple times, in complete streets, there is a hierarchy, and I think pedestrians are first in that hierarchy, right? So sidewalks are definitely a priority where they don't exist. You know, but, so I think there is some value to that vision being shown. But again, it's a little bit kind of cart before the horse in some ways, because there's not what that width is, whether it would be a shero or a five-foot sidewalk, or what, that's not, that recommendation is not yet made, and it's hard to know that here in this district when there's, there's no context to that on either side right now.
I have a-
Yeah, just so it's clear, I'm not, the issue really isn't, at least from where I'm sitting, a sidewalk. I think it's a good idea to build a sidewalk. The issue is the 13 feet. And whether or not, the city, it stands to reason that the city council put together a committee to address options for what can be done with Fishkill Avenue. They wanted to have the ability to actually adopt some of these options. And if we start approving projects and take those options off the table, we're kind of mucking that up.
I mean, I would ask Jen to weigh in here, because I think there is a legal thing, but this committee has not yet made recommendations and is not legislative, so I don't know if we could really hold the applicant to-
Well, so, and I'll let you answer.
Yeah, I mean, Natalie's correct. There's, it's not law yet, but, you know, that doesn't mean that we can't be talking about it and thinking about it and encouraging-
And we're trying to employ that, too. Through the application. So if there, if the board has a preference, or if there is some recommendation, we wouldn't, you know, run away from discussing that with the committee to the extent that there is some, you know, reasonable or manageable, you know, or contextual reality, knowing the Carvana, I'll shut up in just a second. The Carvana application not having a sidewalk that runs, because at Langs, there's no, once you get to Langs, past Carvana, there's no, you know, there's no way to really connect all the way to Mavis and down. You'd have to come back across the street. So our site, while having, again, incorporating sidewalks and connections to Townsend, is to bring you to that. So even if you were on the rail trail, and if there is a connection through the site, and you brought it up, you know, there is going to be that interoperability, interconnection, but we're not, we're willing to work with that. This is a proposal, but that's a moving piece.
Yeah, well, look, it's obviously still early days. It's the first time we're looking at this application. And so, but as well, the committee is still doing their work. I don't know, but I'm not going to sort of, you know, purport to, you know, tell the committee how to do their work. But, you know, this may lend itself to, you know, a series of priorities for the committee just in terms of how we may think about potential proposed future rezoning in context of a development like this, such that, you know, we can- In context of a development like this, such that, you know, we can track recommendations by the board and work by this applicant to potentially align with that future recommendation. So there's an opportunity here to do just that. And I think it's just, it's just going to take some good close coordination and then, you know, perhaps, again, a priority setting, priority setting of the committee around just this.
Well, I mean, I think all the things that this board is talking about are definitely, have been discussed as priorities of that committee, right? In terms of looking at complete streets, focusing on pedestrian, making the corridor more walkable. I just don't have anything, there's nothing for me to point to directly right now of where that consensus has been written down and cracked.
Understood.
So, you know, I think that's where.
Well, then, to some degree, we're an extension of the committee, because this could become the precedent for that, that future, you know, rezoning, right?
John, can I, I don't want to, I just want to have an opportunity to-
Yeah, please.
Make a couple, share a couple thoughts. One of them is that, one of the things we should not do in this case is do what Robert Moses did with the bridges to the Jacob Rees Park, which is make it impossible for a series of things to occur because the developments that we put in place hardscaped here, right? So I think that it would be wise to look at the most, the largest impacts on the site plan and see what public interest aspects there are that we should have them explore to see if they're possible, okay? So I would suggest that one of them is to have all the site improvements be on this side of the highway boundary, right, on the property side, and, and leave that, if there's line striping or other things that have to happen, leave that work so that this doesn't put in sort of half-baked ideas about what might happen about that site, right? That'll save the applicant money and it will prevent the free development and discussion of potential other uses on this side of the road. The other thing that was discussed was putting all the parking at the back, right? And I'm just going to, I know you don't want to design their sites, but a lot of these Dunkins have little seating areas, right? And if you had a median that eventually was developed in some way with the city that was attractive, and some way this street experience became better, that, that could be like a perfect spot to have a landscaped seating area that serviced the Dunkins and was an amenity towards the residential spaces, right? That might have to, and the reason why I'm bringing it up is because you'd have to figure out another way to accommodate all your traffic, right? It's a way, it's rerouting the traffic, because you wouldn't want to put that road through or you'd just get rid of the parking. That's a choice that you have. But I think those would be beneficial, they'd be publicly beneficial, and they don't impact the property, they don't really impact your revenue, right? So consider some of those things before we get all, but the other, the other thing I want to be careful about is there's like stormwater infrastructure, and you want to make sure that that doesn't also prevent other contemplated street arrangements or street sections from being developed. So that's, that's it.
Thank you. Yep. I just, I have one site plan question, and that, just in terms of the, you know, the original site use, the northern end of the property was required for storage of vehicles for sale. So this massive parking lot was a necessity for the Ford dealership. In the, in the current layout, you know, just looking to the future, are we doing anything that would prevent it? And this is like, it almost looks like there could be accommodation on this site for another building. It's something that would, would continue to build out the property and provide further amenities and uses to the people of Beacon. But if we don't consider that now, I'm concerned that we may somehow shoot ourselves in the foot, and it's, it's almost like we have more site than we need for the use that's proposed.
Yep.
And, and so I would challenge everybody to look at the site plan and say, hey, if there was a decision in the future by the owner to build out, to want to construct another building and add, you know, how would that impact parking layout, the layout of the drive-through where the vehicle lanes are? And, and avoid leaving ourselves with sort of a white elephant unusable northern to the parcel that, you know, like I said, unless somebody wants to come up with some other, you know, site use that's not a constructed, you know, building, but that provides, you know, value. But I, I think it's now is the time, even if it's not something that's going to be contemplated right now, I think we would-
Yeah, I was going to kind of tie that to my comment number six. This is my last comment I think I need to talk about today was parking, right? And that this is, again, we have a mid-max in this area, minimum of twenty-two, maximum of forty-one, and they are proposing the maximum. And to your point, Len, I didn't get this in my comment letter, but as I was looking at this tonight, that piece where it looks like we're restoring, we're removing some of the impervious surface, and there's maybe five or six parking spaces there that, you know, that could be a smaller future development site that's not, that allows the site to have a different iteration besides kind of the large site with a setback, more auto-oriented building. So I, just seconding your thoughts, that I was thinking about it from kind of a, is all this parking necessary, especially if it's going to be focused on drive-through? If that is, you know, then is all the parking necessary there? And then if not, could you leave the potential for infill development on that northern portion? So that's me saying what you said.
Yep, great, thank you. Anything else on your, you want to highlight?
I think the one other piece, and Taylor kind of mentioned this, so as well, is I had the same comment for Carvana about the proposed Beacon-Hope Bowl rail trail at the rear of this. And while there is steep slopes here, I think like there was on Carvana, maybe not as steep, but I was just thinking about, you know, potential, again, kind of trying to protect this future vision of whether maybe it's not a direct connection, but maybe it's kind of an easement along the rear portion of the property or something that with that future build-out, there could be some acknowledgement of that future plan and acknowledgement of this property willing to like engage with that.
It's a pretty significant grade change. I used to get my car serviced at Freedom Ford, and I would drop it off and walk back on foot. And sometimes by the time I got to Langs and Josh, I would run down the slope, jump and walk back into town on the rail rather than go on the road. But it's a, it's a pretty significant change.
Yeah, and so again, but you know, what might become necessary is it saves the process. Again, you're not trying to design the rail trail now because that design's not there, but you're trying to set the city up for being able to have easements where work can occur there, right? Whether it's grading or access points or whatever. So again, it's not necessarily needing to plan the space, but it's identifying kind of a, a strip along the rear portion of this parcel that says, here's an easement to potentially work towards a future build-out.
Anecdotally, we did that for Edgewater, as you know, because the Greenway Trail was contemplated someday to get down to the train station, and now maybe with the MTA proposal, it may be coming closer to life. So we reserved, and Jennifer and I always joke about this, there's a connection to the connection trail that's reserved for some future Greenway connection, and there's a whole strip along the Edgewater property that says, at some point, somewhere along here, right, if, if and when, then that Greenway Trail, the city, whoever, has an opportunity to, to be able to link in, so.
Great. Mr. Russo.
We have a number of comments with regards to the plans submitted. Although their consultants have alluded to, they will be providing additional plans with regards to lighting, landscaping. There is an existing easement over the storm that runs through the site right now. The storm appears to be slightly outside of that. As we're doing the subdivision plan, we'd like to shift that easement so that utility is completely in there. We'd also like to give consideration to an easement running from Fishkill Avenue back towards the rail trail to allow for access in the future if there is a development of the rail trail or access out to Fishkill Avenue for the residents across the way and for others to get onto the trail and access it. As far as utilities, I've already spoken with your engineer, they're going to have to look further into that, they may need some additional services brought into the site. As far as pedestrians, we'd like to see an ADA ramp from the sidewalk, if it continues to be there, headed towards the intersection or across from the intersection of Townsend. So people that come downtowns and have an actual place to cross over. And then there's some other minor comments that need to be addressed as they go along.
Great. Any questions for either of the, thank you. Donna, Karen, any thoughts you want to impart?
Most of my concerns have been addressed already. I would just like to reiterate, you know, the city is looking at this corridor to make improvements to pedestrian and non-vehicular experience of this area. So the site plan, other than the sidewalk, the partial sidewalk, really doesn't make any nod to that vision. I can't imagine living on the second floor of a drive-through parking lot. The experience of the site is, you know, horrendous.
Yeah, and let me be clear, and I'll just hearken back to my earlier comments. And again, I know they can be incendiary, they're, they're coming from a place of passion because I deeply care about this city. It's, 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 for me, it's about, and it's a common theme in all of these applications, for as long as I've been on the board, it's about Beacon deserving excellence. It is a unique city. There is no other small Hudson Valley town quite like it. It is a gem. It deserves the very best. It deserves the attention, it deserves the care, it deserves the best. That's where I'm coming from. And so, again, we're going to talk about all of the particulars, the engineering, the specifics, the aesthetics. What I'm, what I'm not trying to do is capture all of that in what I'm saying right now. All I'm trying to do is capture the spirit of what I just said, that every one of these applications, Beacon deserves the best. And we're not there yet, and that's all I'm saying, right? And so I just want it to be known loud and clear from a resident of Beacon and also as a member of this board, that we are all going to continue to direct, steer, cajole, guide every single application toward the best it can possibly be. And that's, that's exactly where I'm coming from right now. So please don't misinterpret that. Only interpret it as a deep caring and a deep passion for the city that every single one of us up here have raised children in for decades and truly, deeply love and care about. It deserves the best. We're not there yet, we know we'll get there.
And I think you've seen that Healy is willing to work through this and has been, and this is, you know, we're here, we're hearing your comments, but, you know, again, it's not just putting in a new tenant in the existing buildings and walking away. It's a, it's a real, this is something we're working with you, and we're going to continue to work through, like the proper power broker would. I didn't think we were going to talk about the power broker tonight, but in the context of this.
Fantastic book. So again, don't misinterpret, don't misread what I'm saying. I've said it before in all of the other applications. I know all of these applications have their unique challenges, their real challenges. And I'm not, I'm not saying that all of a sudden we're going to come next month and it's going to be perfect. I'm saying we have to do some real work here. And that, you know, we might not get all of those, you know, things that we want, but we have to work towards the best. And again, even subtle, small things like what Karen said, it was my first instinct too. It's like, who in the, I mean, maybe somebody will be happy to live above, you know, an old garage that's been converted in this, in the middle of a sea of parking, but to put three units up here, we really got to think about that.
Right, next to the Fishkill Creek, right? Potential connections to rail trails, access, you're right.
It sounds like we're head-
If you build it, they will come.
Yes, those are positives.
If you build it, they will come.
But they, see, that's the attitude I'm talking about. It's, it's, simply because you-
I get to have fun if you get to have fun.
Residential near the rail trail doesn't mean it's excellent, doesn't mean it's the best.
We hear you, and we're going to work through the project.
I understand where you're coming from, and you have, you have a real gift for taking all of the potential positives of an application and automatically conflating all of those positives to mean that the entire application is just as it should be. And that's, that's part of my point here.
So you're going to approve it tonight? All right. With, I would ask procedural, Mr. Chairman.
I'll put it this way, I know you can hear me.
Yep. Thank you. And one, just one procedural question, just for, maybe for, it doesn't necessarily have to happen tonight, but we do have this come up a lot from a GML referral concept. I know we're not there at the hearing yet, but just to think about, because we're not next to Fishkill, we're fifty-two in the section, is city-controlled. I don't know if the rail trail considered a park yet, so maybe just something to think about as we get through the process. And might we ask Mercedes and Bruce potentially to schedule a meeting with Jennifer in our office just to go over the issue presented by the planner regarding the use?
We can talk about that offline.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, and the GML referral, it's already flagged.
Okay, got it. Yes, sir.
Thank you for listening.
Is there any reason, we were talking about, regarding the Fishkill Avenue Committee, the bottom line is, we're saying, we're making the observation that this may impact proposals they're considering. Is there any reason we couldn't just ask them to weigh in on whether and how this would impact any proposals that could realistically be recommended by them?
I think I'd want to check, this is a committee created by the city council.
Yeah.
So I'd want to check and see what the parameters of their authority are, if it included as a potential advisory referral committee to the planning board.
That's, that's, that's one, that's one way to look at it, so, but let's also look at it in another way. That being aspects related to this application, but also specific in germane to others and the corridor, that we might want to share with the committee to say, these are, these are priorities, and these are things we would like you to be thinking about. So obviously, it's about a conversation, the, you know, sort of putting the committee under the purview of the planning board is one of them, and there's a path for that, and I think it would be a conversation with the council, as you mentioned. But then the other one is some communication back to the committee on what we think the priorities should be at this point in time, especially in context of, you know, active ongoing applications within the corridor. So we may not, we may want to think about that path as well simultaneously.
Part of this has to do with just fairness to the applicant, because we're saying, oh, this may impact it, okay, under what circumstances would it or would it not impact it?
Yeah.
We can't really expect them to make any changes without some definitional key here.
And to some degree, my, my hope in an ideal world is that, and again, I'm not sure exactly where the committee is in their conversations about these specific things, but there are specific things that we may be reviewing here in this application that are out ahead, and that will positively affect and hopefully then potentially form their thinking toward recommendations for the ultimate rezoning for fifty-two. So, yeah, let's, let's think about how we work that conversation in that direction as well. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so next item on the agenda, we have, and here we're moving, we're beyond our regular meeting agenda in a miscellaneous business, we have a request under miscellaneous business for one ninety-day extension of site plan and subdivision approval. This is for the townhouses at Conklin Street. And is there a representative here for that?
Yes. Hi. Good evening. So I'm Adam from Insight Engineering, representing the applicant for the Beacon Views Project. We are requesting, if possible, two ninety-day extensions of the site plan and subdivision. As the board likely remembers, the, there was a dispute with the neighbor over a, an existing easement. That dispute is ongoing and is, is in the court. The applicant has many times looked to settle that dispute unsuccessfully. It's, it's currently in the court. The hope, you know, from what I'm told from the applicant, is that that will be resolved in the next year. But for tonight, if, you know, if the board sees fit, we'd like to request the two ninety-day extensions.
Yep.
Just, is this for the access to the potential townhouse development?
No, this is for, the, the dispute is over, there's an easement that runs through the neighbor to the south.
Oh, okay.
There's a, there's an access easement, it was the subject of a lot of discussion during the approval, and that is the access that's in question that's, that's currently being disputed.
Gotcha.
I just want to note one thing, Mercedes circulated an email that we received from a resident today questioning the way the item is described on the agenda, claiming that the development had, was actually approved for thirty-four townhouses instead of the thirty-seven that's listed. I double-checked the resolution just to make sure- also the reason why it's listed as Conklin Street is because that's the address of the property, is Conklin Street. So I just want to make that clear for the public.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. So, yeah, we'll put that in the record then. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Mercedes. So then I'll accept a motion to extend the approval for, for two 90-day periods.
Motion to extend the approval for two 90-day periods.
Motion by Len?
Second.
Second by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so that takes us to bidding our planner and engineer farewell and good evening, as well as our attorney. Thank you.
Thank you.
You too.
Just this one.
Too much.
I'll try not to.
No.
You're pretty awesome.
It's not possible.
Oh, that's your, that's your son?
Yes.
Are they twins?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
That's awesome. That's a great age.
What?
Yeah, it is. Before things go anywhere.
We didn't, we didn't experience any vast upheavals. My daughter's going to be 24 this month.
Oh, my God.
Yeah.
Well, I said that Anya's going to be 23.
Yeah. Yeah. You're right there.
Thank you.
Right there with me.
Wait, how old are you?
Sam's 23.
Yeah.
And Al is 20.
Sheesh, Louise.
Yeah.
Man, a shevitz. Okay. Thank you, Jennifer. Safe home.
It's been a big block.
Yeah. It's like they were paying really close attention.
Getting a new nameplate, a new name, Hector or Cajole. Hector or Cajole.
Who, me?
Yeah.
I don't know. Sometimes I figure I should just shut the hell up.
No, it's awesome. It'll never change. In fact, you're, you're proving the age.
Oh, gee.
I like the new John.
Gee, thanks.
He's so cool, man, John.
Yeah, I'm, I'm losing my, I'm losing it. It's my, it's my weave, guys.
Oh, my God.
So I believe you're, you're going to share with us some, some homes for certificate of appropriateness. How are you this evening?
Good. So I have three houses.
Yep.
One is a redo.
Okay. What do you mean redo?
We had one approved.
Ah.
And then we had a customer nearby lot, black colors, so.
Oh, okay.
I didn't have this color, so we're going to redo the one that's a spec house.
I see, okay. Actually, I had a question for you. You, you shared these, what, I believe are photos of the streetscape. These are built houses?
Some of them have already been built, right, in the same development?
So those, it gives us kind of a streetscape, so some of those were.
Are these built?
Yeah.
So that they're just, it's the context for what's
No, no, I know. The reason I'm, I'm asking is because I have to be getting older because these look like renderings. Yeah, maybe it's just the lighting, but thank you. Okay, that's helpful.
Some of them are. Is Lot 2 built or is that a rendering?
Lot 2. Lot 2 is a question.
Okay, so that's a rendering.
Oh, okay, so, yeah, okay. So I'm not, I'm not going crazy. Lot 3 is built.
Lot 3 is built.
Looks like a rendering.
Lot 4 is built.
Looks like a rendering, but looks, looks good. I just, I don't know, maybe it's like
The lines are so clean. I can't believe it isn't AI.
No, I mean, I live with these like professional renderings on a daily basis, and it's astonishing to me, the level of reality they can achieve. Anyway. So what do we got? So we've got Lot, let me see, Lot 8.
Lot 8 is a one-man film.
Redoing.
And so you're, you're going white shingle, so yeah, white clavard, black roof.
White or red.
And then where's, you've got the wood, the natural wood element. Is that the columns at the porch again? Yeah, I mean, not my first choice, but if your client likes it. You've done it before on?
We did it on Lot 11.
On Lot 11, they're calling for black porch posts.
Oh, they are?
Yeah. It's black. White with black details.
Why did you include the wood in the sample, little samples thing?
Waiting for the Von Trapp family to come out, or at least AI versions.
Okay, so it's basically this house, Lot 8, it's black and white.
This is what kills me, is when the porch and the wall
So let's focus Lot 8. Any comments or other?
We, we had a comment, but, but the rest of the buildings in the streetscape, it's been done already, so it's kind of a moot point. But it seems like all these designs on the, on the side of the porch, the siding, the clavards are extended so that it, that it matches the wall instead of being distinct to the porch, but it's like, I think it's like everywhere.
Yeah, no.
On the newer ones, you're making that break?
Yeah.
That's a lot better if you do that.
Okay, you're doing that on Lot 8. So this applicant's listening to us. Thank you. So 8, let's, motion to approve Lot 8.
Motion.
Motion by Karen.
Second.
Second by David. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we will move then to Lot 6. This one is a dark clavard. You've got wood columns.
I just got the wood.
Yeah, it's very much like
Eleven, wasn't it?
Eleven.
The chalet.
Everybody loves 11.
Even with the shutters?
Yeah, because they're waiting for the
Donna.
They're waiting for the Von Trapp family to come out and start singing.
Yeah. Okay.
The shutters are not the size of that upper window, are they, John? I don't know.
Don't get me started. You know what shutters are for, right?
They're not meant to be functional shutters. They're removable toboggans.
Yeah.
To go with the whole sort of chalet atmosphere.
So Lot 6, motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion by David.
Second.
Second by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Now we're done. Okay.
This is 11, 11 of the 13, so 11.
All right, two more. We'll look forward to seeing you. Thank you for sitting through our, our meetings. Appreciate it. Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Oh, no, he's back.
He's back. Motion by David.
Seconded.
Second by Len. All in favor?
Aye.
Now we're done. Okay.
This is 11, 11 of the 13, so 11.
All right, two more. We'll look forward to seeing you. Thank you for sitting through our, our meetings. Appreciate it. Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Oh, no, he's back.
He's back. Motion by David.
Seconded.
Second by Len. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.